Good evening. This is the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee meeting. It's Wednesday, June 14th, 2023, 6:00 PM. A little bit later, 6:12. We were having some technical difficulties and apologize for the late start. We're at the John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, and GCTV is recording this meeting. We will move right into a roll call, please. Secretary Exstrom.
Here.
Secretary Exstrom, I am present. Member John Smasad.
Present.
Vice Chair Martini.
Here.
Chair Proietti.
Here.
Member Wall.
Here.
Mayor Wiedegartner.
Here.
We are all present, and we have a call.
We're called to order at 6:13 PM. Thank you. And let's go ahead with an approval of the minutes from both May 10 and May 30 as a consent item. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
That was Member Martini, and a second?
Second.
Second from Member Wall. And any discussion of the minutes either set. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any abstentions? Any no votes? So that passes unanimously. And we'll go into item three, which is public comment. Just hold it for a second, and it should turn on. Hold the button down, yeah. And you know to state your name and your town you live in, and you have three minutes. Did you get it? You can try the one next to it. We're all about the technical difficulties tonight.
Hi, Jesús Leva, 32 High Street. I'll be brief, since I sent people from the school committee an extended piece of information by email. I'd like to see school committee members collectively support Senate Bill 303, which increases the state's share of the K through 12 education funding from 41% to 46% over a five-year period. Over a full five-year period, that would get us an additional $1,624,000. But more than just simply that specifically, I really like to see collectively the whole school committee more involved at the state level in pushing for the legislation that's really going to affect our ability to fund our schools. A lot of the issues that we're dealing with are ones that are caused by the state, to be brief. Thank you. Bye.
You're just going to state your name, the town you live in, and you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. It's that hearing that's eventually going at my age. Yes, Tom Bavacca, more commonly known in the school committee as Tommy V., social studies teacher at the middle school. I'm here because I'm very concerned about a particular item. There are 48 million Spanish-speaking Americans in this country. That's about 14% to 15% of the population of the United States. By 2050, it is estimated that the United States will have the largest Spanish-speaking population, not in North America, not in Europe, not in Asia or Africa, in the world, the largest in the world. Now, in the last three years or so, over 5 million immigrants have entered the United States. Currently, there are at least a population of 50% Hispanic in Holyoke, Chelsea, Lawrence, and close to 50% in Springfield. My question to you is why, with these numbers, which by the way are increasing, have you eliminated Spanish at the middle school? I implore you to rethink that and bring it back. I know when I was in high school, not middle school then, but back in high school, many, many years ago, probably long before some of you were even born, almost every high school in this country had a Spanish department, a French department, in my day, a Latin department, and a Russian department. We cannot deprive our middle school students of being able to learn Spanish when there are so many of them among us. One last comment. I am a huge advocate, and I have said this many times when I was the union president for approximately 10 years. American students, in light of the population that is Hispanic in this country, need to be fluent in not only English, but also Spanish, not just at the high school level, not just at the middle school level, but beginning at the elementary school level where students learn very quickly a new language. And I have two very distinguished former students here who also took Spanish. Unfortunately, they took it, I believe, at the high school level initially. Okay. We need to bring it back to the middle school. Many thanks. I really implore you to rethink this. Thanks. Oh, you're not supposed to ask me questions, are you?
Thank you.
Judy Bennett? Followed by Julie Carroll.
Hi, Judy Bennett from Greenfield. I'm also a teacher at the high school. After hearing a couple of those public comments, it'll kind of feed into what I wanted to say, but I wanted to come and thank many of you for your efforts and comments and statements while we were dealing with budget issues and difficulties. It meant a lot to me and my colleagues and our students to push, and we really appreciate your support. It meant a lot. We also have some elections coming up in November, and I think, playing off some other comments, that some of the things I'm looking for are people who are going to go up to the state level and be advocating for the funding that we need and deserve, and that's something I'm going to be looking for in candidates. And to what Mr. Tommy V. said, yeah, we have this influx of students in my own building, Spanish-speaking students, and that is a really important language in our world, and having that opportunity to learn that in school is important, and we should seriously think about that sort of curriculum. So thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
Followed by Melissa Webb.
Hi, I'm Julie Carew. You received an email from me last week. I'm a Greenfield resident, a Greenfield Public Schools parent, and the director of Strings for Kids. As you know, after listening to the budget meeting last week, I wrote a letter to all of you. I am very disheartened by the events of the last several months with the rollout of the budget, which cut fourth-grade band, and the additional cuts that removed funding for Strings for Kids, among other things that have already been talked about tonight. I expressed my concern for this to the superintendent directly earlier this year, stating that it really seems like there is not a plan to rebuild the music programs, but instead to watch them fade away. Before the pandemic, all three elementary schools had chorus, two had bands, and there were two full-time and one part-time music teacher with thriving programs. When elementary students came back to school, this was all gone. Two traveling music teacher positions were created instead, reducing time at the two schools so they could also stretch into a third. I just want to be clear, I fully support having equal music programs in all three schools, but this was inarguably the wrong approach and resulted in the loss of fantastic teachers who are now doing amazing things in other districts. In the middle school, we had a wonderful band teacher who went above and beyond and basically got burned out. Her classes weren't scheduled, her ensembles weren't scheduled, except during the little 20-minute period at the beginning of the day. And when she left that position with plenty of notice last year, it wasn't filled. Instead, the district chose to split the high school band teacher's time between the two schools, citing low enrollment in chorus and music electives. If the district was concerned about the numbers at the high school, I wish there had been more energy put into researching what the issues were there instead of splitting that teacher between the middle and high schools. There's huge community support for instrumental education in Greenfield. The Pioneer Ballet Symphony, which now runs Strings for Kids along with its youth orchestra, will continue its mission of accessible music experiences for all. There's also Music of Franklin, which runs an after-school program, including music education, in both Greenfield and Turner's Falls. At this point, though, all of these vital programs exist in uneasy partnership with the district and are not integrated into the schools. The fact remains that being in the schools is the best way to make sure the musical instrument education is accessible and available to all students. I don't know where I am as far as time, but I am devastated at this message that is being sent to the Greenfield Public Schools, to our teachers, students, and our community about the value of music education. In the past, I've been able to talk with principals, have relationships with them, have a relationship with the superintendent who came to me... Is that my timer? ...when the budget was not doable, and we worked together, and I'm just really saddened by the way this has gone down. Thank you so much for listening. Thank you.
Melissa? Sorry. I'm getting rambling. No. There'll be lots of screaming involved with them. Gordon wanted to say hi, so here he is, so let's see if that works. All right? It was on. Here. Can you say hi?
Hi.
My name is Melissa Webb, and I live in Greenfield. My children attend Newton. Gordon is currently... I did not listen to the budget meeting, but Gordon is currently in kindergarten at Newton, and there is 15, 16 kids in one of his classrooms. His classroom did take on some children that were displaced. Newton has a lot of influx of kids in and out, which we know, and I saw that it might be two first-grade classrooms, which kind of scares me as a mom, especially at the young age for learning. I also wanted to revisit the redistricting topic that we continue to talk about over and over again, and just to give a gentle reminder to school committee that the redistricting committee and the racial justice committee were combined into one committee because they both shared similar goals. Because as a school district in Greenfield, we still support redlining. You know, we are still practicing old ways of drawing out low incomes into certain schools. And this topic of redistricting is not a new one. It started pre-COVID. In February, it was re-discussed. I can't help Gordon, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's not going to work. I'd like to say it would work, it's not going to work. Gordon has a lot of fun at school, but I just wanted to remind everyone that the redistricting and the racial justice committee were combined at one point into one committee because they both had the similar visions to take out the redlining that was occurring. I also have a 10-year-old back there who participates in Strings for Kids, and not having music on the fourth-grade level would definitely be very upsetting to her going into middle school, making that transition without something she's familiar with. Is there something you want to say? No, okay. So thank you all for your time. I'm... Thank you for being patient with my mini circus. We will see you all later. We've got to shut it off now.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to make a public comment? Okay. So we will move on to the report of our student representatives. Please, go ahead, guys.
So as per usual, we're going to begin with Student Council. The Student Council recently held its E-Board elections and class officer elections. We had a successful end-of-the-year banquet, complete slideshow, but we're very saddened by the news that despite Greenfield signing up 10 students to attend the summer leadership camp, the MSAA canceled it due to low enrollment numbers. This summer, we will continue to volunteer in the community, helping the library, at the Big Brothers, Big Sisters .5K, and at the triathlon. The new E-Board will be meeting next week to review our calendar of events and then meet with administration to begin planning events for next year.
The band marched in the Memorial Day Parade, performed at class night and graduation. We are starting to look ahead to next year's field show and marching season. In preparation for that, we will hold band camp August 14th through the 18th. Any interested students should contact Mr. Sypek and sign up for Band with Guidance.
To help prevent summer learning loss, the GHS library is running a summer reading challenge. Students are encouraged to read a book or two or more from the Massachusetts Teen Choice Book Award nominee list. Students can then submit it to a Google entry forum on the GHS website, and for each book that they read, they will be entered into the prize drawing. If they submit a photo of themselves reading this summer, they will get an additional entry into that drawing. All participants will receive a prize and a pizza party in the fall, and one lucky winner will get a $30 gift certificate to the Greenfield Garden Cinema.
Library Club held its end-of-year picnic yesterday to celebrate their final meeting of the year, and they are already planning events for the next school year.
Spectrum had a lot of fun this weekend, marching in the Franklin County Pride Parade and attending the rally at Energy Park, and want to say thank you to all the students and staff from outside of their club who also marched with them.
French. The French Club hosted a fun and well-attended spring coffee house on May 25th and held an end-of-the-year celebration this afternoon with food and games. Tomorrow night at 6:30 PM in the GHS auditorium, we premiered the 45-minute student film, Suivez la Piste, a detective thriller based on a radio play they read in French four. This film is a French film with English subtitles, and admission is $5, and all are welcome. Key Club celebrated and graduated terrific seniors on June 5th. Members planned and presented a field day for all students at the Academy of Early Learning, featured war parachute games, agility courses, relay races, beach volleyball and games. Freeze pops, and a good time were had by all. Finishing the school year will be officer elections and volunteering on Juneteenth and the GPS summer kickoff.
Last week, any sophomores and juniors who chose to do so attended the AP class meeting to hear about their summer workload and receive their contracts. Each class comes with its own expected summer work to be completed, which students were given along with an overview of what they should expect in the coming year. As the year draws to a close, students are beginning to prepare to take their final exams this Friday going into next week. After the underclassman award ceremony in the morning, students will take their Period VII final this Friday afternoon. Once returning from their three-day weekend next week, we will move into a week consisting solely of finals spread out across our three half-days. This will carry us through to the last day of school, which will be next Thursday on June 22nd. That covers our final report for the year, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? I guess I have a couple. So did we get a softball update? What's up with the softball team? Do you guys know?
So the softball team is, as far as I know, moving on to the state championships on Friday, and they're competing against Turner's, so we wish them luck.
And then, so you guys will not be with us for the summer, and I heard it's going to be the Toomey Brothers Show in the fall? Is that right?
It is. So Nate is going on. He's going to NMH, so to take his place, my older brother Tristan will be coming with me next year.
All right. Well, thank you, Nate, for serving us so well this year. We appreciate it. Good luck at NMH. Yes, we're allowed to clap for that. Great, and we look forward to having you back for a third year, Shane, next year. All right. Thank you, guys. Okay, so, excuse me, the allergies are getting the best of me today. We are going to move into the strategic plan, and we've... This was the source of the technical difficulties, and so if I get the announcement wrong, you correct me, we are not able to display it here. If folks in the room want to be able to see it and you have a device, you can go to the school committee portion of the Greenfield Public Schools website and look at the materials for tonight, and it is in tonight's material, so you could follow along that way. If it's on your phone, that might be a little frustrating because it is a rather large document, but otherwise, it is posted there, and we... Folks at home can also follow along in the same way, so I apologize for the technical difficulties on that. And this has been not quite a year-long process. It started in October. I'm very grateful to the pretty impressive list of folks who were a part of the process. It was led by someone we all may remember, Dr. Judy Hool from TMS, who served as our interim superintendent prior to the arrival of Dr. DeBarge. And so I'm grateful for all that work, and of course, I want to highlight Member Wall and Mayor Wiedegartner for their participation in the process. And at this point, I would turn it over to whoever is going to present. Is that you, Christine? Is that Judy? Okay. Dr. Hool, please, or whomever. Your whole... You always do have an entourage. I love it.
This is my next-to-last school committee meeting of my career. I will retire 17 days from now. I'm excited.
But who's counting?
Not me. So, you know, we're just... The team here is going to just give an overview of the process, and then we're going to turn it over to Dr. DeBarge to talk through each of the action plans that you have in front of you. So most of you know me, so I introduce my two colleagues next to me. Directly to my right is Casey Hanfield, who is a senior school business administrator and special projects person for TMS. And further to the right is Dr. Paul Livingston, who is also a senior school business administrator and special projects person for TMS. We have been the team that has facilitated the work of the strategic plan. As Chair Proietti mentioned earlier, the Strategic Planning Task Force had a broad spectrum of constituent members from across the community whose job it was to sort of spearhead the plan, to take some preliminary looks at data and to begin thinking about how the district might move forward. And I have to say that we really enjoyed the conversations that we had with the task force. We often commented on our way out the door about how rich and full those conversations were, and so we just really are appreciative for the time that was put in. So the process was that the task force was convened in October of 2022. We threw a lot of data at them and had them kind of think about it, ask questions of the data, and so on and so forth, brought more data that flowed out of the discussions. And then we did also walk them through what's known as a SCOT analysis, which is strengths, challenges, opportunities, and threats. And the strengths were... And the challenges were things that were internal to the district, and the opportunities and threats were external to the district. We used those data to compile a survey of the community, and in the report, you can see how many people... And I just need to get to that page. Hold on just one moment, sorry. So the survey had 296 respondents overall. The breakdown by primary role within the district was 73 employees, 187 parents and caregivers, 30 community members without children, and six students. So again, it was pretty well represented of various stakeholder groups within the community. From that survey, we then took it back, analyzed the results, and came up with a focus group interview protocol that would allow us to dig a little bit deeper into the data that we had been looking at. And so we held several meetings with students at GHS, and then parents and community members as well, and employees of the district. And so took all of those data and put them together and then began to sit with the E-Team to look at what a plan might look like, since they are obviously the most acquainted and closest to the work and how it would come across. And the data really pointed to four areas of focus, and the first is curriculum and instruction, which is really focused in the general education classroom and also including social-emotional learning. The second area of focus is instructional supports, those things that go beyond the regular classroom in both academic and social-emotional learning. The third area is communications and outreach, and then the fourth area is operations, which includes facilities and grounds, food service, technology, and transportation. As we worked through trying to build the plan, the E-Team was very enthusiastic and wanted to try and do everything in six months. So we cautioned them that that would be implementation overload and probably would not result in doing things well. So we worked with the E-Team to try and stretch out a timeline that went over the period of five years for this particular plan. So, you know, in terms of the teachers being a key part of the implementation of the plan, to have too many initiatives in front of teachers all at once is just really not doable. So we really tried to help the E-Team work through and be mindful of that process. The other thing I will say about the document is that it is a dynamic document, is not meant to be a static document, that as the district goes through the process, you're going to find that things may take longer than you thought or less time than they thought, and so it would be, you know, subject to some constant revision and thoughtfulness. If I were to recommend a motion to you tonight, I would recommend that you might approve the plan, subject to appropriation, because again, budgets, you know, impact all of that, and so that again gives some wiggle room to the plan if you don't have sufficient funds to do something. By the time a benchmark comes into play, it will give you some time to kind of think through that. So one of the things we did after the E-Team developed the plan, we then brought it to the task force for feedback and input, and again, some very thoughtful comments that helped tweak the plan and helped us also think about the fact that even though it's four areas of focus, they really are parts of a jigsaw puzzle that intertwine with each other, that there are certain things that will happen on the curriculum side that will impact the technology side, may impact even the facility side. As people are improving instructional practice, it may mean organization of classrooms are a little bit different, the technology that you bring to bear. So again, just being mindful that even though they present themselves as four disparate areas, they really are integrated in the way that they speak to one another. So then we had a long discussion, and I played a little pop quiz that I won't play with you tonight, but I said, does anybody know the mission statement of the district? And everybody kind of sat quietly for a couple of minutes, and so I pulled it up. There's a lot of words in your current mission statement. You've got a mission statement, you've got a vision statement, and wait, there's more core values with all of that. And I'm of the school of less is more, so we sat with the task force and with the E-Team and said, what would be something succinct that no matter who the employee was could say, this is the mission of the district and this is my part in it? So we came up... So we came up, they came up with, I shouldn't say we, they came up with a very succinct statement that says, the Greenfield Public School District is a place where every child is supported on their path to success. And that mission statement really speaks to all of the four action areas that the district is putting together. So, that said, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. DeBarge, who is going to walk you through the plan itself, unless either one of my colleagues has something to add to the conversation. Gentlemen?
I would only add, you have a tremendous staff, administrative staff here, from the superintendent, all the way down. I have to compliment their, their time, their attentiveness, their thoughtfulness. And I also would, would also like to underscore, the community involvement was tremendous as well. I think you have a tremendous opportunity here to really propel the Greenfield Public Schools forward. And I know Dr. DeBarge is chomping at the bit to present the plan. But I just, I think that's important to underscore. You know, we're, we're in a lot of places and in a lot of spaces across the state, and you know, we have a lot of discussion kind of behind the scenes. And, you know, I think that's one of the things that struck the three of us as we moved through this process with you, was you just have tremendous opportunities. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, there are budget, there are budget difficulties all across the state, and, you know, that certainly resonated with me as I was listening to some of your public comment tonight. But I don't want it to be lost on people, the tremendous opportunities that you do have. And I think this plan really captures where you are now, and I think it really also provides you a roadmap for the future, as you, you know, deliberate on future budgets and take a path forward, you know, for the Greenfield Public Schools. But tremendous opportunities here, and it was a pleasure to work with everyone on this. I don't know if you have anything.
Just very briefly, Paul Livingston, I'm a graduate of the Green Wave, the Green Wave of the other side of the state, Abington High School, so I'm happy to be among friends. I was very happy throughout the whole process to see the good triangulation and the continuity of the information we were getting, because that helped and meant that the community would be able to gather around and, and really support something going forward, because these are what everybody sees and feels. And then the data that we looked at from state and the other input we had, supported that. So I do think the plan that you have before you is something that can be well-supported, is well-thought-out, and with our many years of administrative leadership that we've had in schools across the state, I am retired, and it's good. But my wife, my wife pushed me back out into work again. So I'm, was happy to be part of the process. I think you have something strong. You have a wonderful community that sees a focus, and this can help establish, there are many things that communities want to do. People come in with ideas, and you have ideas. But if you don't have something in writing, you can't really say that's good to bet, because right now, you need to focus on this. That's a great idea, however, it's not on our radar right now. It's great, we'll keep it in mind. But this will give you a place to focus budget, to focus your energy, to focus staff, to move forward. And Greenfield really can move forward, I think, with this plan. So congratulations on great work from the community.
Yep. And just so that if you're looking at the plan templates, just so you know how they're organized, at the very top is the mission statement, then you'll see the strategic area of focus, and then you'll see an overarching goal, which is sort of that 30,000-foot, you know, what is the overall income, outcome of the plan. And then you'll see some objectives and some actions, and who's going to be responsible for what, and sort of timelines and benchmarks along the way, that if all goes well, would be markers of, of knowing from your vantage point as school committee members, what and how is being done throughout the course of the plan. So, Dr. DeBarge, floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Unfortunately, I need to share, there was a, we are having an evening of
Technical difficulties.
Technical difficulties. One of the goals for the strategic plan was omitted from the final document that you have. I have it. I will go over it, explain the thoughts behind it, but obviously, that will need to get resent to you, updated on the website, and then
And we'll, we'll delay the vote on this until July, so we can see it again and discuss at that point.
But I will go over with, I will go over all of the strategic plan, the areas of focus, the goals, and then the general steps. I won't go into all of the minutia of implementation, but, so the first goal, area of focus that we prioritized will not be a surprise to the committee members, which was curriculum and instruction. So there's been a lot of work done in that area, and after the review of data that Judy referenced, we, we recognize we still have a lot of work to do. So our overarching goal was to provide the Greenfield Public School students with high-quality instructional programs geared to meet the needs of all students and ensure their success. So our smart objective, the first, was to create a data cycle review process to analyze student growth and achievement. So in this area, we were looking to identify data points, create a review cycle, and the most important and impactful piece of that is then to use that data to make instructional change, because we can look at all the data in the world, and if we don't do anything differently with it, then that misses the point. So that was the first goal and the strategic actions. And I realize it sounds like a quick and easy thing, because it took two minutes to talk about it, but it is a very in-depth process to implement, to ensure that all staff know what their data is. We have to ensure we have a timeline, that we have consistent assessments implemented. And then we create the cycle, talk with staff, make sure they're comfortable looking at the data sets that we have, what do they mean? And then how do you use that information and target different instructional areas, or work with different students to make change? So I highlight that so that it's clear there are a lot of pieces behind each of these steps, but certainly, if we identified each of those distinct steps, this would be a 9,000-page document, and that wouldn't serve us any. So, the second piece of the curriculum and instruction focus was, all staff will implement evidence-based instructional strategies in the general ed setting. So that involves developing a common language, an understanding of effective instructional practices, providing exemplars and modeling of the effective instructional strategies to staff, and then develop and implement classroom visit protocols after we've ensured that all of the staff know exactly what we're looking for. So, again, what are we talking about? Do we have a common language, common definitions, common expectations? Does everyone know what that looks like? Have they had ample professional development so that they're fairly comfortable? Can't be really comfortable until you've done some of these things for a long time. And then how do we support our staff in implementing them and doing classroom visits as part of that? It's not the evaluation process, that is a very separate and distinct process. This is done in a supportive manner to identify professional development needs or areas of support that administration and potentially their colleagues can support. So those are the highlights of curriculum and instruction. There's one other piece related to the Tier One, general education classroom. All district staff will embed evidence-based social and emotional strategies in the general education setting. So that involves, again, developing a common language and strategies, providing exemplars and modeling, and then developing and implementing classroom visits. So the same process holds for the utilization of best instructional strategies, evidence-based strategies around teaching students social emotional skills as well as academics. So it would still be developing the common language, modeling, and then having the system of visits to support ongoing professional development and professional growth. So we're looking at ensuring we have the academic skills being shared in the classroom for all students, as well as the social emotional learning.
Dr. DeBarge, if I can just interject a quick thing, I did find the omission, which is the instructional supports plan. I just emailed that to the school committee, so you, if you have a device, I do, you do have it.
Thank you.
Okay. And the final piece under the curriculum and instruction is to create standards-based curriculum maps, pre-K through grade 12 in all content areas. That is a mouthful to get work, to get the work done. So we would be working to create curriculum committees. You can imagine that there is an expertise in content needed to create the curriculum maps. These are written documents, so that we have the resources available for all of our staff in these content areas. We identify the standards, assessments that would be appropriate, then create a curriculum review cycle for all content areas. As Judy spoke to us wanting to do all the work in the first six months of next school year, we also have to be mindful that we can't write curriculum maps all at the same time, especially for our staff preschool through grade five, well, six, because our elementary and preschool staff teach all content areas. So we can't ask those same people to write curriculum maps in all of their content areas at the same time. It's impossible to do. So we will create a cycle through which all of our content areas get reviewed on a regular basis. That would include things like looking at state standards and looking at instructional materials. So potentially, that would be when textbook changes could come up. So connected to those maps would also be things like budget conversations about needed resources, potential capital requests, depending on the materials. We also would be having professional development on what curriculum mapping and state standards look like, how to utilize those for developing effective units of instruction, and then create the maps, create the actual written documents. So this is most assuredly a multi-year process to get all of our content done. We can certainly work on, say, English Language Arts district-wide, while there is another content area being simultaneously done, such as maybe physical education or art, so that we're not tapping the same staff to do all of the work at the same time. So there are many benchmarks of success with timelines embedded in this plan. I was not intending to go through them unless you feel like that's necessary. Again, that would sort of lean us to that 9,000-page document, to go through all those pieces, but, so, if anyone has questions around the curriculum and instruction?
Please, questions from the committee? I saw a member Denise hand, go ahead.
Oh, I just have one question. Sorry to drag you back to the first page. I just wanted to see the review cycle of the curriculum and instruction section, where you say it'll be done three times a year. Will you also do that?
Are you talking about the data cycle?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the data. The data protocols will be used annually to review the data at least three times per year, October, February, and June. Will you also be able to do something like that in a bite-sized way at the committee level, so that we'll be able to sort of see what the data is?
Well, we would do it, I would present data differently at the school committee level. So the three times a year, that's when we do the map assessments and some of our other district assessments. So we would be doing it at a much more micro level, with teachers and principals in the buildings, but at the committee level, we would be looking at that from a district or at, as small of a level as the grade levels.
Right. I just like the idea of us getting some bits throughout the year, so that it feels really digestible, and like, we're able to understand the direction that you're going, because this is a big, this is a big hefty thing.
It's huge.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions at this point from the committee? Please, Member Johnson Musa.
First, an appreciation. I think the school committee has really been interested in the curriculum getting much more robust in the way we think about it and strategize around it, and I feel like your leadership, Christine, and, and the team is really, really helpful in getting us there, and also really appreciate the Assistant Superintendent for her efforts and all. It's been great to see us moving in a more sophisticated direction. I had a question of, I think that, like, I'm looking at page three, and this, I think these may be kind of brainstormed lists from when different pieces were brought to the group, but one thing kind of jumped out, out of me, which was, on page three, it cites lack of student desire to learn as one of the challenges, and I don't, I feel like maybe someone threw that out there at a meeting, but I hope as a district, we, we're not seeing students that way. I think we, we probably assume that all students want to learn, and that sometimes conditions of their lives and, and of the system that they're in don't allow that to flourish, but I just wanted to ask about that.
So, do you want to?
Sure.
It was part of the
So, these bullet statements were actually brainstormed, and the caveat that we gave to the group was that these were not anything anybody would judge, we would just accept all ideas, and then test them through surveys and focus group interviews. And so I think during the survey focus group process, it did not pop as a major concern. So it was a way for us to test those ideas, but that's just, that was just a brainstorm that happened from the group.
Thank you.
Member Denise, you have another question? Go ahead.
Sorry, I just had, along that subject, I just had a quick question for Dr. Hool. So we shouldn't, because, for example, in challenges, it says low parent engagement, but in, in strengths, it says engaged parents. So there, I noticed that there are some that cancel each other out, so we shouldn't take that as something to worry about, that was just thoughts, thoughts and feelings.
Yeah, and that oftentimes happens in this process. What some person sees as a strength, someone else sees as a challenge. And sometimes that is a double-sided coin, as it were. There are some parents who are very engaged, there are other parents that, and I think when you get to the communications and outreach piece, you'll see the thrust of wanting to make sure that that number increases. Other questions from the committee? I actually have two, I'm sorry. So please, refresh my memory for persons responsible. I know what this, I know what ASKP is, she's right there. I can understand what a building-level administrator is. Can you remind me, what is an instructional leadership team?
The instructional leadership teams, we are very happy to have now in place at all of our schools. We've utilized grant funds to put, their, their leadership teams made up of staff in each of the building. Generally, it's our teaching-level professionals that work with the building principal to help us inform instructionally, curriculum instruction and assessment-based decisions. So they would do things such as look at building-level data, make summary statements about the strengths and needs after that analysis. They would work with the principal to talk about professional development needs, resources. So it really is, as, as it suggests, an instructional leadership team within each building. And that is one thing that our statewide system of support, SSOS folks, have been working with us on, is working with the principals to get the skills to facilitate the ILTs, work with the ILTs about what their role is, and then over the next months, they will back off, and the administrators will assume full responsibility without SSOS support.
Thank you. And then my second question is related to the curriculum maps and that process, and it will, in terms of the content of the curriculum, is it okay for us to assume, I hate that word, that there will be components that comprise diversity, equity, inclusion within that? Because I think it's important to talk through, it isn't specifically listed in the plan, but it's there in terms of content. Oh, you, ASKP, where's your microphone?
I gave it away tonight. Absolutely, those will be components, especially under the new DESI regs. There's culturally responsive targets that you have to meet, and putting DEI in curriculum is one of those as well. So really analyzing what we have, what we use, what we need to incorporate, what we need to adjust, what we need to enhance is really part of that whole process.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I just don't want anyone to look at this document and make any sort of assumption that it's not there. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Other questions on this section from the committee? Okay. Thank you.
Dr. DeBarge, I did also email that missing template to you. If you did want to go through it tonight, we have a couple.
I have it, actually. I had it previous.
Okay, because we have a couple of extra paper copies that we can hand out to the committee if you want to take that on tonight.
You have sufficient?
If we had enough paper copies and copies on devices, I would love it, just to be able to see it. We can still talk about delaying the vote, but to be able to see it would be helpful.
We have three extra copies that maybe people can share who don't have the ability to call it up on a device.
I will, while you're doing that, I'll move on to the next section and then we'll go back. So the next section is communications and outreach. So the overarching goal of communications and outreach was for us to build and maintain strong relationships through communication and outreach within the schools and greater community. So the first piece, the first objective, is that we will offer more family-friendly school-community activities during the year. One of the things that we talked about at the administrative meeting when we worked on some of these goals is that the activities that are offered within the schools that are more laid-back, more socially-driven rather than with an academic focus were much more attended. And so we want to make sure that we're offering opportunities that are primarily driven by the ability to grow a sense of community as opposed to always working with an academic focus. So certainly, we will continue to have, you know, bingo for books and math nights and things, but that families, especially at the elementary and preschool levels, really seemed to be engaged with the ability to build community with each other and coming to the school. So that is why we talked about offering more family-friendly. So one of the strategies will be to set calendar dates at schools and the district. That sounds like a very easy thing, and yet it is not. So working around all of the other activities that happen and ensuring we're coordinating and collaborating so that we're not creating conflicts for people. We don't want to have a middle school and an elementary school activity on the same night and force people to pick. That would defeat our purpose. And then also work on ways to provide multiple opportunities for family input. So part of what we will do there is figure out a way to get input from them about how they want to get information, some basics. So it's going to start very pragmatically, just how do you want to hear from us? If it is school messenger, great, we're doing that. If it's on the webpage, great. So we need to find out how we can have a flow of communication and input back and The next piece of communication and outreach, so as it's creating a robust two-way system of communication with families. So that's where I talked about the gathering information about best ways to communicate with families. And we will establish consistent methods and timelines to get information out. So, and then we will have increased opportunities for students to participate in activities outside of the day. Increase engagement in school-based activities. I know we did some of that this year. We had the late bus. We had clubs. We had some clubs last year, but we'd like to enhance those opportunities for students district-level and school-based. Okay? That is, that is communications and outreach. You know, things like dealing with the update of the website to make it more user-friendly is part of that that's happening. So there are things happening, but these are the steps we felt were most important to have families feel more connected or have the opportunity to feel more connected to the schools. Now, I do want to say, one thing you will see is some of this work is happening very soon, and some of it is a little bit later out in the plan dates. And that is not because we're not working on ways to improve our two-way communication with families. But when Judy spoke to overload on the front end of the plan, she did make us do an exercise that was very impactful where we had to look at the areas that we needed to focus on and we could rate them. Number one was basically an emergency. Number two was kind of an emergency, but not so much. And number three was not an emergency, but we need to do it. And then she told us we could only pick one number one, because we would have picked all of them as number ones, which she knew going into that activity. So the one number one was curriculum and instruction. We have to improve our instructional supports for students. So it's not that anything else is less important. It's we have to make sure that we have the resources physically, financially, cognitively to do the work we're doing to the best of our ability. So that's why we have to move things around across the timeline, not because we don't think they're not important. So I don't know if there's questions about communications and outreach.
Thank you. So the communications and outreach section, are there questions from the committee? I, oh, Secretary Extron, please.
I guess this is sort of theoretical, but I'm looking at the, sorry, I guess this is a little bit theoretical, but I'm looking at the persons responsible. Does that include persons who will be involved? Because I'm looking at these things and family-friendly, family-friendly events at each school and district-wide. I'm curious how it is that we would expect teachers not to be involved.
It's those people identified as persons responsible. We own getting it done, not that we are the only input, but we have to drive.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the committee on this section, communication and outreach? I'm not seeing any, so we can go ahead to, you can do operations next?
I will do operations just because it's in front of us and then I'll move. Okay. So operations, the overarching goal is to ensure we have a welcoming environment for students to learn, and that encompasses a variety of things. So the first area that we talked about was we will ensure that all technology is accessible and in good working order. And I think the committee knows that this is not a light lift based on the history and what our current status is. We've talked about this a fair amount. So one of the strategies would be to evaluate our resources and develop replacement priorities. We have already started a staff advisory committee that's working with John, our IT director, around what they feel our priorities are, the driving needs. So there will be teacher input in that. And then we have to make sure that we know what we've got, is one of the pieces, making sure that we have a good inventory system that we can manage consistently. So that's the second strategy, is to establish efficient process for resource management. We need to be able to have accurate information about replacement, end-of-life, what's working, what's not working, a way to log help tickets. It's all of those pieces make the technology available or not for staff and students. So that is a very important piece to, we can't talk about what we need until we are sure we know what we've got. The next piece is to create a capital plan to replace technology. Right now, we've talked about grant funds through the ESSER grants, but that will not last, and our technology refreshment needs will continue always. So we need to be planful about how we're looking to establish that replacement cycle. And then create a set of standard operating procedures for technology staff and provide training. With the advances in technology, it's critical that our staff has the training that they need to serve the resources that we have, from the servers to the devices, hence my technical issues. So that is also a very important process. So that's our technology support. We will also ensure that we have a plan for well-maintained facilities that is fully implemented. Again, we've been talking about capital needs in our buildings for quite some time, so we have some steps to work toward having well-maintained facilities that are, the plan is implemented. We will create a set of standard operating procedures for custodial and maintenance staff and provide the required training. There is a substantial amount of training that our maintenance and custodial staff require annually for safety and for using the chemicals and materials that they have. So that is very important for us to ensure we're doing that. We need to establish an efficient help desk system for repairs and requests. That includes not just immediate things that need to be replaced, but also a cycle of painting the rooms. I mean, think about the process for getting all the rooms in a school district painted on some cycle. That has to be documented, so we ensure that we do that. We also will create and implement a maintenance plan for immediate, long-term, and recurring needs. As I said, some things are shorter-term, like a broken faucet, midterm painting, long-term roofs, and energy recovery units, and creating a capital plan for our facilities. This is something that Eric and I have started working on and requires, obviously, significant investment from not just the schools, but from the city. The next piece is for us to implement a fully articulated transportation plan to ensure students' access to educational settings that meet their needs. So we will create a plan for maintenance and replacement of transportation vehicles and equipment. As you folks know, the district owns vans and little buses that we utilize significantly during the day for transport for our students, not just to different programs in the district and outside of the district, but they also do some of our athletic transportation. So they take some significant responsibility for transporting our students, and we need to ensure that we're monitoring the age and fitness of our vehicles and creating a cycle for replacement. We will gather feedback from stakeholders regarding our transportation service, that's staff, families. We want to make sure that we're serving them the best way that we can. We also want to create a set of standard operating procedures for our transportation staff and provide professional development for them as well, as they also require a significant amount of professional development annually. We will provide a detailed analysis of the costs for our transportation department. I know that question has come up, most recently at city council meeting about is our transportation department, you know, cost-effective? And so we want to look at how we can best serve the district and balance, you know, fiscal responsibility with that. And the last piece is to ensure that we have a meal program that is accessible and appealing to all students. We will create a plan to ensure that food service technology and equipment is updated. We have a goal to increase participation in our food service program and provide professional development for the food service staff. Again, significant amount of training is required annually through the food service program, state-level program, as well as through the district. Is that it? That is it? That is it for that one, for operations?
So that's, thank you. That's the operations section. Do we have questions from the school committee about any of the operations items? Okay, I'm not seeing any there. And so we have the section that is missing from the packet, instructional supports. I've been able to pull it up on my device here. I'm told that people have paper copies or they have it on a device. Does anyone on the committee not have a copy in front of them? Oh.
Oh, Dr. Ho.
You have another one? Thank you. Awesome.
Fantastic.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ho.
You need one, Mayor? I don't know if the mayor needs one.
Mayor, do you have one?
I have it on my device.
Okay. Get, take a paper copy.
Christine and I are visually challenged.
Okay, fantastic.
That's why we did the bars, not the road.
Okay. Thank everyone for their incredible flexibility. So the instructional supports area of focus, our overarching goal is to ensure every classroom is a place where every student succeeds. The smart, first smart objective is that the Greenfield Public Schools will have a cycle of needs assessment for students, no different than our general curriculum and instruction data cycle. We need to ensure we're monitoring telltale signs of student need, whether it's academic performance, whether it's nurse visits, absences, challenging behavioral data. So we will establish a process for monitoring that because we need to identify who the students are that are not being served with the classroom-based instruction alone. So we will identify students who require academic support. We will identify students who are requiring social, emotional, and behavioral support. And then we will provide interventions intended to meet those needs and to allow them to be successful. We will establish, we have an attendance smart objective that is separate from the other because attendance is a significant issue for us. We've made marked improvement that I will highlight for all of you at the next school committee meeting. We're going to be having a very happy data report that meeting. But it's still, it's still an impediment to learning when our students are not able to be in front of us every day. So we will have a data cycle and needs assessment for students who are challenged with attendance and providing services to support them as well. We will establish a uniform process for student support teams. We have a process for student support teams, and there's more variation than we would like to see from building to building. So we will ensure that that is consistent. We will evaluate current procedures and documents and then generate an updated, consistent manual for all buildings so that we ensure we have the same process for all of our students. And then for our special populations, our students with special education and English language learner needs, we will conduct program evaluations for all special ed and English learner education programs and implement continuous improvement plan. So we will review the range of our interventions, evaluate service delivery models, evaluate program models, develop an action plan, and then implement the action plan. Now, this is huge, huge. One piece that we are fortunate to have is that the Department of Education for our tiered focused monitoring for both English language learners and special education has just concluded, and we will have the reports at some point this summer. So we will share those with you. I know that we have needs in both areas, and we know we need to make improvements. Again, not something that the committee is surprised about. We've talked about the needs in those areas. So this will be a wonderful way for us to start because the Department of Ed has helped us to identify areas that need immediate focus. So that was that.
Okay. That is instructional supports. Are there questions from the committee about that section? Member Johnson Musa?
I have a question about overall when that's, I don't know, I just went, I wasn't sure if you may ask that.
Did you say overall question? So let's just pause for a second and then we can move into that, because that's totally fine. Any specific questions about instructional supports? Any specific questions about instructional supports? Okay. So, Member Johnson-Musad, please. We'll open it up now for overall questions.
It all seems great, but it just does really seem like a lot. And I'm just wondering how the committee looked at what capacity we have to actually do all of this stuff. Like, I know we want to be ambitious, but have we, is, has the plan kind of gone too far where there's so many things here and we're not going to be able to do them all, and we don't know which ones would be the most important?
So, yes, it is a lot, but we need to do these pieces, as you just said. We know that we have simultaneous priorities. I think some of the pieces that work, make this plan work better together than maybe it sounds like when I read it all, is that in some areas, there are different people working. So the operations piece is, you know, those folks, Jake and Eric and John and Greta, are able to focus on those pieces, you know, generally without a ton of input from the building principals. Certainly, there is input, but they can function moving along on their elements of this plan somewhat without the rest of us. Some of these pieces we're already working on simultaneously. I think one of the things that is an advantage with a documented strategic plan is it keeps us from going off in all the million tangents that we very much would like to do. I appreciated Casey referencing the administrative team. I couldn't agree more. What a fantastic group that we have. And we want to address all student needs yesterday, and that isn't possible to do. It's just, it's not feasible from a system standpoint, from a financial standpoint, capacity standpoint, for anybody in the district. So we sort of need this plan to keep us from being all off in every million directions. This is helping us focus on the core pieces of each thing. I can assure you that as soon as we meet one goal, we're going to say, oh, but we could, and it'll be my job to keep us on the plan until we have these things firm and solid. Then we can start branching. The other thing is that we will do, we administratively, we will be doing updates on this all the time, but the committee will also be doing updates on this. And so there can be adjustments, I like to think, that we'll adjust because we will have met some of these. But it is possible that we will need to adjust timelines when, at some point, maybe reality will, will make us adjust some timelines, but, and truthfully, as Judy said, it's pending appropriation. So appropriation may also adjust some timelines for us. But I think it's what the district needs us to focus on, and it is a lot, but it's the right stuff to do. So, thank you. Other questions from the committee? Member Wall, please, go ahead.
I would like to comment on what a privilege it was to serve on this committee and to recognize that people from all statuses in Greenfield, from people with children, the teachers, people who didn't have children, were, all brought their concerns in to this group and said, here's what we want to make Greenfield Schools better. And they put together a plan that addresses each of those concerns. So this is a compilation of everything that we heard that needs to be done to make the Greenfield Schools function better, from every kid needs a computer to every kid needs to know how to read and do math and have languages in music and art and fun and athletics. I mean, all of this is written in education language, but that's what it breaks down to, is every child should have the best possible way to gain an education. And that's what all of this group worked together to see how we could accomplish this in a set amount of time. It's overwhelming when you do it in little pieces. That's why we had to have a team to say, here's how you do the whole thing. And, and this education language makes it difficult to see that that's what the goal was, and that's what will be accomplished in this plan if we can accomplish the plan.
Mayor Riedinger, please.
I want to second what Jeanne just said. It was a privilege to be a part of this, and I thank Chair Poirot for asking me to join. And I want to thank Dr. Hool and her team here. Are you a doctor? Maybe you're not a doctor. I thought you were a doctor. That's what I remembered. For it. And I appreciated the comment from Dr. Livingston, I believe it was, who said, "Greenfield can move forward. We really can." But I enjoyed this for the simple reason that we all really worked well together. We, we didn't always have the same thoughts, and that was okay. Dr. Hool was a master at keeping us on task, right, Karen? And getting us to, to march to the beat that was that particular meeting. So I think this is, this is an extraordinary document. I hope it's a living document, and I think it's a, it's a good jumping-off place for the ability for the city and the school department to work together to see that we can, we can fund our schools, we can fund our city. We need this kind of data. We need this kind of information to help us, guide us through the next five to 10 years. So I'm very pleased to have been a part of this. It's a good time for that to have happened.
Thank you for that. Other comments or questions from the school committee? I just have one in terms of a suggestion. It would be for my brain, super helpful, to have a timeline of the different benchmarks that are listed. You know, by June of '24, we'll have this. By, something linear rather than like with all the verbiage in there.
Want a, like a timeline?
Yeah, by date, these are the target things that we want to accomplish.
We can do that. Clarification, do you want it at the benchmark level or the?
The benchmark level is what I'm looking at, because that's where most of the dates are.
Sure.
And I don't necessarily think that we need to have that to, as a school committee, be holding you to those dates, more as like a way to digest the information in a simpler way is the only, only reason I ask for something like that.
You can have it for both reasons.
Okay.
That's okay.
It just, yeah, I, I appreciate that you can't get everything done by June of '23. I so appreciate that. So, thank you, Dr. Hool.
That was a tough sell.
Yeah, I bet it was.
We did a visual, and when they saw the visual, they went, oh. So would it be helpful, because I'm happy to take the templates and do that as my parting gift?
I'd happily take your gift.
Would it be helpful to do it sort of in a calendar format so that by June '24, this part of the plan, this other piece, this other piece, this other piece?
I can tell you get what I'm asking for. However you feel like you can display it best for us to use it in that way, I would trust your judgment on that. Just a little bit different than searching through this document to find the dates where the benchmarks are.
Yeah, so we can organize it by dates and then which parts of the plan it speaks to. Yeah, that makes some sense.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else from the committee? Member Johnson-Musad, and then Member Denise.
Dr. Hool said in our motion on this, we should say, subject to appropriation. And I think that calls to mind both the need for the, for the school committee to really be advocating at the federal, state, and local level, and all of us working together to make sure that the schools have as much of funding needed as possible to implement all this stuff that we all agree needs to be done. So I hope every member will do that.
Member Denise, go ahead.
I just wanted to echo what you said about having a timeline, and I was trying to then imagine in my mind, could we have this timeline in, in a form that we could sync with our calendar that we're going to have soon, so that when we're looking to the future, we can see these benchmarks in that?
I understand what you're asking. These benchmarks are for school operations, school administration. Our school committee calendar will be completely different in terms of things the committee needs to be responsible for. We are not necessarily the ones responsible for making the targets on this strategic plan.
I understand. It would be more for knowledge base of where we are in the timeline. I'm not.
When we get to more in-depth with the calendar, we can talk about how we would want to, want to incorporate the two things if we do.
Okay, that would be great.
Vice Chair Martini, please.
What I was going to say feels like maybe a bridge between those two things because I was about to ask whether we can please plan for an update on the progress on this strategic plan on a certain, every-so-after basis, like maybe an annual basis, as to where we are in each of these areas. And I wanted to ask for something a bit more frequent and more specific, which actually is kind of a second to what Member Denise had said earlier in the beginning in relation to updates related to student growth and achievement, because that's something that the committee has talked about wanting to specifically focus on more and more regularly. And so I was going to ask if we could have those two things worked into our.
Yes, so there would definitely be at least annual updates on the strategic plan. I honestly envisioned, without necessarily holding to it, because we'll have to see how it actually works.
We'll compare what you were going to say and what I was going to say.
Okay. I do expect there will be some updates in my superintendent's updates to the committee as some of the very specific, detailed benchmarks are met. One of the things that we found as we were talking about our assessments and the timeline and presentation of data around assessments is that through the strategic planning process, we need to first ensure that we're doing all the same assessments in the same way, looking at the data in the same way. So we need to calibrate, I guess I will say, internally so that the data we are presenting external is, where we're confident that it is apples to apples to apples. So that is one of the first pieces that you'll see as we're looking at the data cycle and the assessments. You know, MCAS is a little easier because it's, you know, it's an apple. We get it given to us. So, but in, internally, you know, looking at our own protocols and process and timelines and all that, we need to, to have a little bit more consistency in that as we look to present data to more stakeholders. So, but yes, I expect you'll hear quite a bit about strategic plan updates through mine and Karen's. I mean, her entire assistant superintendent report to the committee pretty much has been curriculum and instruction all year. So I see no way that that will be different going forward.
Yes, well, and I was really happy to see that work kind of being codified in this plan. I wanted to ask specifically about PD because I saw that it was on the list a whole bunch of times in regards to challenges under culture of staff learning and some other places on the list of needs that's in the beginning of this document. And also, PD is part of multiple parts of these benchmarks, which is good and makes perfect sense considering what was brainstormed. But I was also thinking that we've heard, I've heard a fair few times while sitting on this committee that having time for professional development is a serious challenge. And so I was just wondering how exactly you hope to tackle that, and should the committee consider changes to things like the school calendar and things like that in order to actually make these, this ambitious level of PD happen?
Probably. Just to be very succinct, you probably will need to consider at some point some challenger, you know, changes, but we also need to balance that with the language of our collective bargaining agreements. So, you know, it's, it's not so simple as, as many of you know, as just saying, oh, we're going to do an extra PD day. So we do need to look at that. We're establishing the calendar. That's part of, we have what we call an administrative retreat, and it's a little bit of an oxymoron. There's no retreating happening. But we do spend several days together coming up shortly, and one of the priorities is establishing the professional development plan. I will say that is one of Karen's primary things that she, I don't so want to say she likes to do, but she is absolutely masterful at working with the principles around using every minute of time that we have. But I won't be surprised if at some point we are talking about different timeframes. But again, it's something we'd have to engage with our, our unions and, and talk about that. But it's a huge need. Thankfully, the food service and technology and transportation, professional development and facilities can happen a little bit separately because those department heads primarily do their PD. But it's a lot. We, our staff is, is charged with a lot, and they're doing a great job, but.
Okay. I had one sort of sub-question on that, which I think is more for Dr. Hool because you were there. So on the list of challenges, one of the mentions of professional development was the need for school committee professional development, and I wanted to know what exactly were folks looking for under that.
I think, this was done a long time ago, so now I got to get, I got to get those hamsters up and running to think about that, because we did ask clarifying questions during that process. And I think it was just a case of making sure that school committee was current in, you know, changes to the law and policy development, you know, potentially, you know, attending the MASCE conference and just keeping abreast of all of those things, that somebody just wanted to make sure that that voice was heard as well, that PD is everybody's job.
That's right. Okay, thank you. I just had one more. I, and this is more of a general question, but I did have one specific area with it. So it's really ambitious, and I, I like all of the things on it. Actually, implementing things requires people, though, and we already ask so much of our staff. So I am wondering whether we are going to need additional staff to deliver certain things, especially objectives related to offering more social activities for family engagement and expanding after-school activities for students. And that was jogging my memory, that we had a part-time volunteer coordinator position previously, which was not filled and is not there anymore. And I know that we have brought on certain positions like having a coordinator essentially in different departments. And I wanted to know if we should consider having someone like a enrichment and extracurricular coordinator or something like that in order to proceed.
So I think when we talked about this administratively, we were talking primarily about potentially our staff having the ability to offer after-school clubs or courses, and those would be stipended positions. Those are also reflected in the collective bargaining agreement, but there are opportunities for staff to propose new ones. And there are some very unique clubs, looking at primarily the middle school. They offer some very unique clubs that students participate in quite a bit, and those were based on staff interests, and they, they offered those. So some things that I do think the committee will need to decide if you want to continue supporting are things. supporting are things like the late bus. That's a huge opportunity for students to be able to stay and engage with after-school activities. And, you know, those are some pieces, I think. You know, the stipends certainly have a financial impact, but for one club to have a stipend is very small money and could impact a fair number of students for the year. So that was a little bit more of what we were thinking, but, you know, we certainly can hear from students and see what they're interested in. But if the, I mean, sorry, but.
Go ahead.
If the committee wants a volunteer coordinator, you just have to say that that's what you want, and then we can, we will make it so.
Vice Chair Martini, you're good with your question? Anyone else, questions or comments on the strategic plan? Is it just me or is it really Colden here?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay. So let's regroup. Sorry, that was a tangent. I just needed to know if it was me or.
I think it's you.
Let's regroup. So the strategic plan has four major sections to it: curriculum and instruction, communications and outreach, instructional supports, and operations. And we had a little hiccup with having the pieces available in the materials. It does appear that everyone was able to get the materials in front of them. Are folks prepared and comfortable with a vote, or would you, because of that, like to delay voting until July?
I think we should vote.
There's a comment that we should vote. Others are nodding. So let's try it, okay? And I have a suggested motion. I move to accept as presented and provided appropriate appropriations the strategic plan for the Greenfield Public Schools covering July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2028. Would anyone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Multiple people. I heard Member Wall. And then a second from Vice Chair Martini. Any further discussion? I'd just like to say thank you again to the folks from TMS. Thank you to all the folks who participated. I'm sorry?
We need to do the vote.
Yes, I was waiting for any further discussion. Yes, and I was commenting. That was my discussion. Okay. I'm aware we need to vote. Anyone else want to comment or have a question before we vote? Anyone abstaining from voting? Any no votes? Wonderful. That passes unanimously. Thank you and thank you all. Thank you. Dr. Hul, I really wanted to be your last meeting, but we'll take second to last.
You are my last in-person meeting, so how's that?
Take that. Thank you, folks, for being here.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I do have a change to the agenda I'm hoping to get approved at this point. Before we move into the budget discussion, could I have a motion to move Item 10 regarding the tree donation to be the next item that we address? Would anyone like to make that motion?
So moved.
That was Member Johnson. We sound in a second.
Second.
Multiple seconds. And so this is related to, we do have something in the packet related to this, and I see Judy Bennett is still here. Judy, come up and give us some information, just if you could, sit at the public comment.
I vote.
Oh, we have to vote. Hold on. Anyone abstaining from voting on changing the agenda? Anyone voting no? Okay, so that passes unanimously. So this is regarding a tree donation for planting at the high school. Judy, can you just give us a little bit of an overview here?
So as a science teacher, I have been trying to utilize some of the campus with my classes here and there and the rain garden, which is the entrance, not the back entrance, but the main office entrance. And last year I connected with Mary C., I'll say, I don't want to mispronounce her last name.
From the tree committee.
From the tree committee.
Chikwan?
Thank you. And last summer, she and I like toured the campus and were chatting about the trees and maybe the tree committee and some of my students could get together. That didn't happen this year. But so we were in, we were connected. And then we got the news that Donna Woodcock had passed. And I, she hired me. I worked under her for a couple of years before she retired. So I knew her, but I wasn't close, but many of my colleagues were and many people were just, you know, devastated and shocked because it was just so sudden. And I also kind of manage our unofficial sunshine club at the building. And so people were kind of just in passing, asking me like, are we doing, who's doing something? What are we doing? Is anything being planned? And I said, I love Donna, wasn't that close, doesn't necessarily feel like my place. And after a few more conversations, someone had said, oh, we should, you know, do something at the school, a bench, a tree or something. I said, oh, a tree. And so I brought the idea to Dr. DeBarge and Ms. Patnod and Mr. Morrison and just said, hey, what do you think about this? And I could reach out to the tree committee. And it kind of went from there and here we are.
Awesome. Thank you. And tell me again where it will be planted?
We think if you're going in the voting entrance, let's say, where the cafeteria is, if you're facing the building, just to the left, there's kind of a big blank brick facade. And that seems like a big open spot, like a frame and.
With nice sun.
Right at the entrance where people like the public will be there. The, in your packet, it's, we thought it was going to be a scarlet oak and what was actually ordered is a white oak. But either way, I think it'll be a great addition to the campus and just a strong representation of, in her memory. And maybe eventually someone could add a bench or a marker. And that's my hope. I didn't necessarily think I was going to be taking the lead on this, but here I am.
Here you are.
Here I am.
Be careful what you offer. Okay, so just hang there for a second, if you would. Why don't we do a motion before we discuss further? Where am I here? I would suggest a motion, I move the Greenfield School Committee accepts the donation of a tree from the Greenfield Tree Committee to be planted at Greenfield High School in memoriam for late Greenfield High School Principal Donna Woodcock. Anyone?
So moved.
So moved. Member Martini with a second from the mayor. And I would just add that also in the packet, I did try to do my due diligence before we put it on the agenda to make sure that if we had a policy, we were following it. The closest policy that I could find was Policy EC, which is in your packets, related to building and ground management, which kind of says if something like this is going to happen, that the superintendent and the building principal would be the ones to make sure that it followed whatever that we needed to follow. So that is there for your perusal. And then any discussion from the committee about this?
I have a tidbit if no one else.
And there's a tidbit. And then, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to share that Judy and I had talked, we've been communicating through email. Eric and DPW are working because we had, there are some logistics to get the tree planted, so a date for it is pending. When Judy has the date, she'll let me know and I'll share it. But we had to get DigSafe because there's some excavation involved and we had to have Snow's mark where irrigation is. So they've been, Snow's did that for us. They donated their time to come out and do that. And then I believe it's still DPW that's going to help dig and plant the tree. So it's really nice. Judy's facilitated a very nice community effort on Donna's behalf. So I'll share the date when that gets scheduled.
Thank you for that. Any, Mayor, would you agree?
It did occur to me, and I appreciate what you're doing, Judy. And I'm wondering if, while you, all of us here know, and I'm sure whenever it gets planted, we'll also know that it's in memory of Donna, but will there be like a plaque at the foot of the tree or something that says so?
We don't have anything planned as of yet, but that's my hope.
Okay.
It seems appropriate. Just don't have anything in the works yet.
Okay, thank you. I think it'd be a good idea, should work on it.
Yeah, thank you for that. I agree. Any further questions, discussion, comments? So it looks like we're ready to vote. Anyone abstaining from voting? Any no votes? So that passes unanimously. What a wonderful tribute to Donna. And thank you, Judy, for putting that together. And let's coordinate on a plaque or other piece to this so people know what it's for once we actually have the tree in place. Awesome. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, now, the next big item, we have the FY23 budget. Oh, Andy, do we have? Yeah, so Andy, Andy's injured and can't drive. So that is why he's not here this evening, and we are going to get him on the phone. And this is something that we have precedent for on the school committee in terms of people participating by phone, whether it's administrators or school committee members. Many folks may remember that Member Hollins used to often participate by phone when she was on the school committee. We have him? Let's see.
Talk louder. Good evening, can you hear me?
We got you. Yeah, we can hear you now. Hi, Andy. Fiscal year 2023 budget update. Is there anything you want to share with us?
I mean, you have the report as of June 6. We are, again, if you look and see it as reported, the transfer to handle the retros are included in this. We have done the first round of retros that are being charged, and then encumbrances will have changed as well to exhaust that balance. And we are, again, with one month remaining in the fiscal year, all administrators have been diligently going through and reducing encumbrances so that come the end of the year, as we've done in the past, we will do our reclasses to zero out the local and use up the revolving accounts as anticipated for the FY23 budget.
Great, thank you. And also, I just want, I asked Andy to put together a very simple bridge for all of us between FY23 and FY24. And there's a short table in your packet that looks like this, very small, very simple, that just shows the difference between FY23 and FY24 with some very simple line items there. Are there any other comments or questions related to FY23 from any school committee I'm not seeing any, but the mayor is still mumbling to herself and.
My button is on.
That's okay.
I'm not, I'll keep it because she's there, you have to.
Oh, it's kind of buried in there. It looks like, looks like that. Any, anything on FY23 before we move to FY24? Okay, so we'll move on ahead to FY24. You ready for this, Christine? Yes, okay, go ahead.
So as we had talked, well, I guess there's a few pieces. So after a final vote by the city council, the school committee budget was increased. They reallocated just over $1.1 million. So Andy, I'm putting you on the spot, but do you have the total increase, at least in a percentage after the reallocation?
Give me a second. Yes.
So you have in your packet, just interrupt when you're ready, Andy. You have.
I'm ready.
Okay.
It's an 8.6%.
Thank you. So the request originally from the school committee had been a 10.3. It is now 8.6?
Correct.
Okay. So two pieces to that. One, there is still a slight variation between the request and the final allocation for FY24. And the second piece, which I know I've talked about, is in the original FY24 budget, when we anticipated the reduction of about $1.5 million, we prioritized staff for FY24 and used an additional $1 million of ESER III funds to offset staff salaries. I've talked about this ad nauseam, but I know we need to share it again, is that the ESER III funds will be gone after FY24. So any staff salaries that are paid out of that for the next school year, there will be no funding for it for FY25. In anticipation of the budget cuts, we were using about $2 million of that grant to fund salaries, which meant we would have approximately 20 staff people vulnerable in the FY24 budget because that grant would be gone. So when the budget was modified to an 8.6, one of the things that Andy and Karen and I did is look at the budget and what could we pay for that was not people out of the grant so that we could get as many salaries as possible back into the local budget for FY24 with the longer-term goal of having those salaries more stable, as much as can be anticipated two years out, but trying to put us in a position where we felt it was reasonable to think more salaries were stable, not only for '24, but for '25. What you have here in your budget document, the multicolored typical budget document represents the same format as the proposed budget. What you see here is a suggestion from me, working with Andy and Karen, around ways to reallocate grant funds and take salaries as much as possible out of that grant. So there are a few things, and you will see the potential budget reduction document, which is the yellow, blue and green document where we talked about ways that the committee might address the budget reductions. And this total budget summary together represent what is a possible way to address the FY24 budget. I want to go through the potential reductions because there have been some changes, and I also want to share a few thoughts that have come up since we've begun all of this. So the first thing I need to share is that, as I said to you folks, I think during the April meeting, none of the budget reduction options are recommendations. The administration, myself and the administrative team do not want to cut anything in the budget. I cannot say to the school committee that I will not offer ways for you to have a balanced budget. I would be negligent in my job. So I must present something for your consideration. You can make whatever changes within some guidelines that I'll share. You can make what, any changes that you would like. It is ultimately your budget and I will implement it as you want it to be implemented. So the other thing that is very unfortunate and very challenging when you talk about ways to change the budget is we cannot talk about the people. We have to talk about the programs or the positions, and that is exceptionally difficult. But when we are in a position to have to make decisions about money, that is the way we have to approach the process. So none of this is easy and none of this is our preference. So if you look on the potential reduction document, the first thing that you will see is we had identified reducing a reading teacher. That position is anticipated to be funded out of Title I, so that no longer needs to be. So that no longer needs to be considered in the FY24 budget. We had a staff person retire, and the rules of Title I allow us to put someone new into the grant. So, that is being captured in that way. When we originally were looking at reductions to the budget, I had first requested two additional positions because we expected bubbles in kindergarten and grade one. When we had the budget reductions, I took those two positions out. Now that funds have been restored, I am requesting that the committee consider leaving funding in the budget for one of those positions in anticipation. We're monitoring numbers. Right now, our kindergartens look like we are okay with the two sections in each building today. We have a couple of months before kindergarten starts. We have an influx at some times, and we're cautious always around kindergarten enrollment and class sizes. So, I'm asking if you could consider leaving one of those positions in the budget. But we are still, I am still suggesting that you would go forward with the other one removed from the budget. The Greenfield High School history teacher and business teacher.
Perhaps you mentioned this, but I'm curious, what does the X mean next to these?
The X means that it is computed in the mathematical formula at the bottom. If you look on the second page, way at the bottom, it shows the final city budget allocation, and then all the Xs on there total, give us a budget that totals the same as the city. So it's just my mathematical formula.
So meaning that they are...
It's being cut in my suggestion. It's not, you know, it's final. That's just reflected in the FY24 budget document.
So meaning that the X means, just more black and white, X means that it's included or excluded?
Excluded.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry. So, there were two potential reductions at the Greenfield High School, one in history, one in business. Again, I talked about low enrollments in some of the courses. What I can tell you is that we still hold with that. Both staff are otherwise employed, one within the district, one outside of the district. But, you know, the staff is accounted for. If you were to reinstate either of the positions, which you certainly could, we would be looking for staff to hire. These are some of the cut, or potential reductions we're making where we're using the grants to offset the expense. So, we took the curriculum supply line out of the local, put it in the grant. That allows us to fund more salaries out of the local. We will have to figure out in FY25 where to fund this for ongoing curriculum supplies. But at this point, you know, we're trying to prioritize people in the local. We've reduced special ed tuitions that were funded out of the grant. And we've also reduced special ed testing kits and supplies, middle school instructional supplies, middle school office supplies, middle school periodicals. Some of these things are being put into the grant. So, you know, we're offsetting as much as we can with these material items, but they're not being funded out of the local in this budget proposal. Reduce IT software, hardware, and materials. We would look to use grant funds. We were using $2 million of ESER to fund salaries. Now we would be offsetting some of that, putting staff salaries into the local, putting the IT supplies into the grant. And then we'll need to do an in-depth assessment as we go through next school year of what the technology status is, and that works because it's part of the strategic plan. So, reducing instructional supplies at Four Corners, reducing McKinney-Vento transportation, we talked about this. We're doing more of the transportation. And just, I'm sure someone will ask, our recent enrollment of students who have been displaced, they are, they're enrolled in our schools, so we're not transporting. But that's, I know someone will ask about that, but we're lucky to have them enrolled in our schools. Again, reducing special ed transportation. We're transporting more of our students together. It's just been a less costly year. And Jake, looking at the trends, feels that this is a reasonable change at this point. Funding textbooks from ESER, again, we will need to look in the future. We talked about the curriculum revision cycle. We will need periodically to talk about where to fund materials, textbooks, online resources, whatever they are. But for next year, we're looking to do that out of the grant. Again, some more instructional supplies. You can see, obviously, every one of our buildings has a reduction in instructional supplies, office supplies. Looking at funding curriculum instruction and assessment supplies out of the ESER. So some of our recurring materials for our English, Language Arts, and Math programs. We can easily do that out of the grant next year. But again, we'll need to look at funding in FY25. So, you can see, we've, we've talked about moving a lot of stuff into the grant and using that for supplies, I mean, for salaries, which is wonderful for our staff. Presents some potential challenges in '25 for materials, but... So, the next section, things that are a little less desirable to talk about. I understand the challenge about talking about language at the middle school. I do not disagree with Mr. Bavacqua's comments in any way. I told you, these were not recommendations, but we had to make some options available to the committee. We actually, in this rendition of our budget, did include funding for Strings for Kids. And I will talk to you folks about music in a second. So, we had originally reduced field trips out of the local in the budget when we were talking about more significant budget cuts. But we're looking to reinstate that field trip transportation, but using the grant to pay for that next year. We still have a line in our budget around maintenance at Green River because there are some systems we have to maintain, like we have to keep the lights on, and we have to fix some things that happen. I know the city pays for the lights, but we have to pay for things like servers, the security system, things along those lines. So we're moving the costs for Green River into the grant, reducing some facilities expenses, and moving some staff development into the grant. There's only a few other changes, and then I'll go back up to the music conversation. Based on feedback from the Budget Subcommittee and based on feedback from the Department of Ed around our...
Thank you.
Okay, so wherever we were, I'm starting here. So, we are, the draft of the FY24 budget that you have reflects that there is included a 504 coordinator and included a full-time ETL for early childhood. That's an educational team leader, someone who facilitates special education team meetings and communication with parents. The goal of these two is that we are able to provide services to families in a more time-efficient manner, holding the meetings, getting paperwork out to families. So I feel like this would be something important for the district, especially given our recent reviews with Dussey and the feedback from the Subcommittee at our second-to-last meeting. We also included funding for middle school athletics, again, and included funding that we had reduced for middle school extracurriculars. And of course, looking at the proposal for the strategic plan, this just made sense to add the funding back in. So, I would like to go back to the music conversation because we understand that, I say we administratively, we've talked. I also, Karen and I had a great conversation with our elementary music teachers and to talk about some things that they would like to do that they think would enhance. You know, whether or not the committee chooses to fund additional positions, that's, that's your, that's your decision, and that is something that we will implement if you do. But I want you to hear sort of the thinking from, from all of us and then from our music teachers. The music teachers are very excited to incorporate more chorus into their lessons. They're very excited. We talked about that we would ensure that there were the ability to have district-wide concerts again, that they, you know, they haven't happened since COVID. Last year, we couldn't really do them because there were still a lot of restrictions around distance and instruments. This year, that doesn't exist, and, you know, that, it wasn't something that got prioritized again to happen. I think, you know, between the pandemic and then coming back, the focus did not go back there. But it's something that we can easily accommodate, and the two music teachers were very excited to do that. So, we also talked about the potential for, you know, potentially doing ukuleles for classrooms, and they could do little band-like in the, in the music classrooms. I know that's not what people think of when they think of a band, but to get all of our students to play an instrument together within the confines of a music class. They were talking about things like the ukulele. I asked if they could think of something besides the recorder. I'm sure some people can play it great, but, so it's variety around that. So, they're all, they're all on board and very excited. One thing that I talked about with them was, you know, the position that I did reduce. Again, needing to make decisions about resources, was the fourth-grade band. And asked, is that something that you want, you want me to advocate for the committee to put back into the budget? And they said, not so much. We'd rather, if the committee's going to put a music position back in, we would like if it was a secondary chorus teacher. So, if that is something, I don't know if that's something that you folks feel that you want to have a conversation about, but I just want to share that they're sort of thinking of the music program differently than what it was. We talked about ways to do instruments, and we have in the community. We do have Strings for Kids that our, our students participate in. We do have Music of Franklin. So between the students already in Music of Franklin and the numbers that are anticipated for Strings for Kids, we potentially could have 70 students next year doing instruments outside of the public schools. So, we could offer outside-of-school band lessons, instrument lessons. We talked about that. There are some logistical challenges, including the unavailability of at least one of our teachers to do anything outside of school. And we don't want to pull away from other, from other places that have programs going that our students are, are participants in. So, you know, I think that would be looking at talking to families about what would make the music, the band more appealing at middle school and high school. They talked about, there is natural attrition at some points with band. As you get into the upper high school, there are times when students, you know, are competing. The courses that they want to take compete. That's especially true in a small high school. They just give that up for other things. There are other opportunities that they want to try. Excuse me. But the decline in the number of students enrolled in music in Greenfield certainly has been much more dramatic than we would want. We agreed that there was some impact with the pandemic. But the middle school band primarily has had an extreme decrease in enrollment. So, you know, Michelle and I have been talking about that, and Derek and I have been talking about the band at the high school. So, it's not something we're not aware of. But I just want to share that we are, we are working on enhancing our music program. We do value the music program. So, that's a point for you folks, but I just point out that when we did this revised FY24 budget, the funding for this, our portion of the Strings for Kids subsidy was included again in the budget. It's a proposal. Again, you folks have the ultimate decision-making on anything that's funded. So, but I want to put that out there. We've, we've been having conversations, and we think there are ways that we can enhance the program potentially with a choral teacher, if you folks want to do that right now, or without. And we can still do some things that we believe will enhance the program.
Thank you. Thank you for the overview and the details as well. So, we do have to have a vote. I think that I would like to take discussion before we do a motion at this point and make sure we're clear on what our options are and what folks are thinking before we do that. So, I would open it up at this point for questions and comments from committee members. I can tell Vice Chair Martini is ready. No? Go ahead, yeah.
When you say secondary chorus teacher, did you mean a teacher at the secondary level? Or did you mean an additional teacher?
Thank you for that clarifying question. I meant a teacher at the secondary level. So I, what I should say is, there is potential if the committee is inclined, but we could talk about the challenges with that after. But what I meant was an additional music teacher at the high school, secondary, middle school, high school, because our elementary music teachers felt that it would be the best use of funds if a position was restored to not go to fourth-grade band again, but instead to use that FTE, full-time equivalent, to support an increase in the chorus program. So I think the short answer would be, if you want to enhance, don't put back the position I cut. Do a different one, which would be an additional music teacher to support middle school, high school, so that we could have band and chorus as separate entities. Does that make more sense?
Yes. And what would be the cost of the secondary, approximate cost of the secondary choral teacher?
I'm going to bend over and ask Andy to give me the salary that we use for budgeting purposes for... He's coming. I know. I can hear you percolating in there. I know the minute I start talking, he's going to have the answer. So I'm waiting.
While, while he's looking for that, what was the cost of the fourth-grade band that was cut?
So, I wouldn't actually be able to share that because, again, that would have to be something Andy could look at back in his records. Because what happened is the fourth-grade band teacher is still in the district. So he took the position vacated by a different staff person back in the winter. And so it was actually that salary that was reduced in the budget. So...
So you want, you want the middle school teacher salary we use for a placeholder?
Correct.
We use the $80,346.
Okay. Eighty thousand, three forty-six, which is master's top step, I will be honest. We've been, we've been getting a lot of applicants in the district that are veteran teachers, which we're very happy about, but to be conservative with budgeting, we do use... which we're very happy about. But to be conservative with budgeting, we do use the higher step. If I could share just a challenge with that, if the committee would like to reinstate a position, is that we either would have to reduce something else to offset that cost, or we could assume it would be grant-funded for for the sake of discussion tonight. And then after we go through the summer, where traditionally every school district has people who leave and others hires, and we look at what the difference is between what we had budgeted versus the cost of any new hires, it could be possible that the new salary could be reallocated to the local after that process, in which case it would not be grant-funded in actuality. But for planning purposes, if you chose, you could do that and leave it grant-funded. The negative there would be if it continues to be grant-funded, it potentially could be vulnerable for FY25. Did that? Sorry. I know this makes sense in my head. I tried to say it out of my head in a way that makes sense.
You you're definitely making sense.
Okay, thankfully.
Vice Chair Martini, do you have more?
Just one clarifying question. Strings for Kids is left in.
In this, yes. Yes.
Is it also in this?
Yes. Oh, yes. Everything that is in, that is not with an X, is in the FY24 budget document that you have at your place.
Okay. And and therefore, the middle school Spanish position that is still Xed out here is not reflected here.
Correct.
Thank you.
I saw Secretary Extron, Mayor Wieda Gardner, and then Member Denise.
So, the, from our budget committee discussion, or budget subcommittee discussion, the string for kids is a we're in a different spot than where we were previously, and it's now included here. I'm curious, where is it within this?
It's it's generally not. We fund it out of the school choice.
Okay.
So, but it's, we don't utilize that amount of school choice to fund something else.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Wieda Gardner.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Just so I understand. So, you're saying that item number 15, reduce McKinney-Vento transportation by 20,000. You're saying you that is a you can do that and still provide what what McKinney-Vento requires?
As of now.
Yeah.
You know very much.
That's why I was, that's why I'm asking.
Correct. But what we did is look at trends. And Jake looked at what his his requirements are and what we've been doing. And we have the ability, in his estimation and in ours, Andy's and mine, that at this point, based on what we're looking at right now, we can take that reduction.
Okay. And just so I'm clear on this, Pat, this most recent conversation on the choral teacher. Member Martini asked, what would the cost be? And I think I heard you say, to reinstate that person, it would be eighty thousand, three forty-six?
So, we would be putting a position back into the budget? There's no person that's connected to it currently?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the fourth grade band position that I had taken out of the budget prior to it going to school committee, that person, that teacher, took a vacant music teacher in the district. So, he is wonderfully employed with us still. So, if the committee wanted to add a music teacher back into the budget, we use a flat figure as a placeholder for staff because we don't know who's coming in as the applicant. So, we use that top step as a budget placeholder. And based on the new contracts for FY24, the top step of the masters would be just over eighty thousand.
Okay. And this brings to mind, actually, that was a question I was going to lead with, and then it escaped me. But you mentioned, which I think was a good thing, of using, taking positions out of the grant and funding them with the additional money. But, and I get the point about attrition as we get closer to the end here. How many vacancies do you have still, even with the funding? If you know.
We we have unfilled positions, but they're budgeted.
Okay.
So, actually, I think all all of the positions that are vacant, I'm going down the list in my mind, should be already, would have already been funded out of the local. To the best of my recollection, because they are generally special education and related service providers, like our BCBA's, school psychologist positions still open, two speech pathologists. So, those those positions were not added when we got the grant funds. Those were previously funded in the local. So, those are already budgeted.
But how many is that?
Oh, off the top of my head, I don't know.
Okay. Under 10, more than 10?
It's part of the challenge in answering your question is that we have additional positions posted because of a variety of reasons. I'm thinking about actual, we have no teacher assigned to a position. I would say we're probably close to 10, but I can send you a more solid number after tonight.
Okay, that'd be great. And I was particularly moved by Tom Bavacqua's plea for the middle school Spanish teacher. I I had the good fortune to be raised on the Texas-Mexico border from the time I was in the eighth grade till I finished high school. And I quickly had to learn the language because we were prominent, you know, most of my classmates were Hispanic, and almost all of our teachers were also Hispanic. Now, that doesn't mean they taught the class in Spanish. Well, some of the times they did. But if they had to translate for someone, this is long before we had that type of assistance that we get now for second language speaking. So, I do believe, especially when I know that the people that we are the immigrants and refugees that we're accepting into the community now, actually, the primary language is Spanish for those people. So, I'm curious, is there an explanation why that was? I mean, did it have to do with student enrollment? Did it have to do? What is the explanation for the cut, per se?
Well, again, so I go back to the first comment that I made when we talked about this, is that none of these were recommended, but
I understand. Believe me.
One of the, one of the scenarios was that specials elective courses at the elementary schools, at the middle school. One of the things that we need to ensure we can do when we offer these elective courses is provide preparation periods for our classroom teachers. So, you know, students go to these elective courses so that the teachers can have their prep periods. And one of the things that has happened is that we had more elective teachers than we had the need for based on the numbers of students. So, the students at the middle school didn't select courses as they do at the high school. There's rotations that they go through. So, when we had to strictly look at budget numbers and challenging decisions, one of the things that we looked at were the numbers of elective courses we had and the numbers that we needed. One of the things that, you know, one of the other pieces that we looked at is that the students are, get a, like an intro. How do you describe it, Michelle? It's a six-week rotation? Okay. So, they get six to 10 weeks of exposure to the language each year. They do get enrolled. All of our students get enrolled in Spanish or French in eighth grade at the high school. So, it was it was one of the options that we talked about. Again, it's not that we don't value the language. We we had to make some challenging suggestions about things to reduce. And again, when we look at the positions that we considered putting back into the budget, we really were only able to offset 815,000 or 880,000, I apologize, of the million dollars of grants. So, you know, we still were using 125,000 of that extra million. So, it's 1.1 million in ESR funds. So, again, if, when we look at money was restored to the school budget, but if we went back to everything that we had originally, using the $2 million, positions vulnerable again the following year. So, it's balancing. Certainly could be restored for next year. And then I do fear some of these positions, if they can't be moved into the local, we will be back having these very difficult conversations the following year.
Okay, I understand difficult cuts completely.
Yeah.
So, are you saying to me, and I think I heard it correctly, that there there's no Spanish taught at the middle school right now, but there is an exposure to the language?
They they do learn some of the language.
Yeah.
But it's a it's a six to 10-week exposure to it. But they they do.
Well, thank you. I would advocate that we try to find a way, but I understand what you're saying. Thank you. It helped to have the explanation.
And Member Denise, and then Member Johnson Musa.
My best memory, and my family's best memory of the middle school experience was the fifth grade band. Going to the concert, watching the kids. It was packed. Everyone was there. And this was, what, 2022? This was not that long ago. Everyone was there. Everyone cried. It was wonderful. It was a whole thing. I don't understand how that program isn't surviving or is having low enrollment when it was so heartily beloved by the community. There were so many kids involved. So, my question, I have a couple of questions. How do you see the future of the music program now? What classes, can you give us a rundown of what classes are going to be offered in which grades? And what sort of outreach are you going to be doing to the students to get them involved in these programs? Because there must be some sort of thing that's going on if these kids are not actively being pushed into these programs. I mean, they should be put into music. And now, I've talked to some of the people who are involved in Strings for Kids and Music of Franklin. And the number one thing that I hear is that they're not getting a response or a connection with the district that is helping to make that happen. So, I'd like to hear about the outreach you're planning, and I'd like to see if you could give us a rundown of what classes we can expect since you're saying that you want to enrich the music program. What does that look like?
So, I can't give you a list of classes without having known that you were going to want that. I don't have them.
You were mentioning like the choral teacher. So, are we talking about a choral class in middle school and a choral class in high school?
Essentially.
Okay.
I'd have to sit with the principals, with the music teachers, with Mr. Sipek, the band teacher, and see what what potentially would enhance, what would collaborate with the band, that type of thing. So, it's it's a potential. When I met with the elementary music teachers, I can tell you, when I said, what what do you think would do it, enhance things, they said, get a choral teacher. So, that's why I'm sharing that as a potential a potential opportunity.
And there's no band now in middle school?
There is.
Or there is a band in middle school?
There is. Yeah. It doesn't have a high enrollment, but there is band.
Okay. So, there's band in middle school, and there's chorus in middle school?
No, there's no chorus.
In elementary?
No. There is the ability for our music teachers to embed additional singing through the general music classes.
Okay. And that's going to be at which, at which levels, middle school and high school? I'm just trying to get it.
That's elementary.
Elementary. Okay. Elementary is the possibility of
No, they're definitely going to embed more chorus into the elementary music classes. That is definitely going to happen.
And then the secondary choral teacher would be at the high school level?
And middle school.
And middle school. Okay. Okay. So, at the high school and the middle school. Okay. So, you're looking at, you like have a program, and then plus Strings for Strings for Kids in addition to that. Okay.
And Music of Franklin.
And Music of Franklin.
So, but that would mean, and Elizabeth, I appreciate you saying that we need to, you know, encourage kids to enroll in the band and chorus, but they have to want to do those. So, like, we we encourage them, they get the information about what the courses are, they have exposure through rotations at the elementary. But if it's an elective course, then, you know, our students, when they meet with their guidance, their guidance counselors, and talk about their areas of interest and things that they would like to engage in as elective courses, you know, those are courses that the students need to want to participate in.
I understand. I mean, I'm I'm a classically trained musician. Some of you don't know this, but that I went through very, very intensive musical training all the way through the whole thing. So, I'm a big advocate for music education because I've been through it from the seed to the whole thing. We could, I could bust out German opera right now. You don't even know. But so my other thought is, I'm I'm of the same mind as as the mayor on the middle school Spanish teacher. I come from a Spanish-speaking city. I know what it's like to be immersed in another language, and although I did not come from it fluent, I definitely was able to speak, and it inspired me to travel the world, and I went to many Spanish-speaking countries. And only having it in high school would not have enabled me to do that. And also, younger children learn languages faster and more efficiently than older students. So, I mean, I don't, I mean, I understand what you're saying about the money and the electives and the six to 10 weeks, but it's not enough. And I think it's part of a larger picture, because when we come back at some point in time, maybe next year, we'll have the conversation about school choice or whatever. What is going to make parents want to enroll their kids is having a secondary language program and having a robust music program and having a sports program, which we seem to have a lot of. Maybe sports is what we're supposed to be investing all our money in. I don't know. But I'd sure like to see if we've increased the sports funding at the high school level because I would want, I would support cutting a whole lot of other things before the middle school Spanish. Because that seems really to be an important thing. And and more importantly, a time period in people's lives that they are going to lose the efficiency of learning the language. And we don't have enough diversity in Greenfield. We don't have enough Spanish speakers in Greenfield that we are all interacting with on a regular basis. And the only way to increase that diversity, to interact with that community, is to learn some of the language. So, I just don't think it's enough. So, I guess I don't have like an answer to that, but I'd like to know if there's, I'd like to see if we've increased the sports funding at the high school level. Because I did watch the budget subcommittee, and it seemed like we might have done that.
You think we did increase sports funding at the high school, athletics?
Yeah.
We might, Andy, can you check to see if the athletic, I mean, I know it went up some, but do you have a, can you let me know how much? Some of the increase in the athletics at the high school was in part as an increase to the cost of the equipment. So, just the other piece that was reflected in the athletic budget is that we have had trained staff in the training room during our sports. Go ahead, Andy.
That is the increases.
The contracted services. Okay. So, we have staff that not only have to attend by MIAA rules our hockey games and our football games. We also have trained staff. We have a physical therapist and a nurse practitioner that man the training room during season, which is basically September through the end of May, which is sports season. And that had not been completely reflected. And that had not been completely reflected in the budget prior. So we're ensuring that it's there. You have something else, Andy?
Yes, in addition, the revolving account, I mean, if you look at the update as of May, that's in a deficit. So the funds that the athletic program is collecting isn't covering what it apparently had, had done in the past. So the total athletic budget, when you take into consideration the revolving account, we needed to cover the fact as a deficit in our revolving accounts.
Did you, were you able to hear, Melissa?
Yeah, I, I was, thank you. I mean, call me naive, but I would be, as a parent, I'd be into cutting some sports in favor of a Spanish teacher or something along those lines. Because I think that we excel, we really give the money to that. But this is something that I do not think that we should be cutting at all. So I can't, I can't support cutting a Spanish teacher, but I am really glad to hear your music program plans. Thank you.
So I saw member Johnson Musad, and then secretary Ekstrom, and then vice chair Martini.
Maybe folks can correct me if I'm getting some of this history wrong, but the superintendent put forward her budget that already included substantial cuts. And then it went to the mayor. The mayor made drastic cuts, and the community really pushed back. And the mayor, in response to that, my perception was, made a financial order for three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the schools to kind of offset some of the damage that had been done in her original budget. Then a group of counselors worked together to try to restore, get it back to the superintendent's budget, assuming the mayor would be good on her promise of that three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And so now we're looking at these, and I think it's very clear that the schools could really use three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. It's not that we don't need those funds. So I would like to ask the mayor if you would be willing to restore the three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars you had promised to the schools.
Well, thank you for, Chair Prowety, may I speak?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for that. And I take offense at the word drastic cuts. I have a responsibility. This is the point at which I do wear two hats. I am a longtime school committee member, if you count previous and now, nine years. I've been through nine budgets. They are always difficult, and there's always the tension between the budget that has to fund the schools and the budget that has to fund the city. And they're really not two budgets. They are one budget at the end of the day, and it has to balance. So in this particular point in time, the point in time that the budget was put together, it would not have been able to be balanced if there weren't substantial cuts on both sides. I had already cut two point seven million dollars from the city budget at the point at which it was given to the city council. So that was just as hard as what you have to do tonight, tonight, we have to do tonight, and what the superintendent had to do. But I had to do it alone. So I, it wasn't a drastic cut that I enjoyed making. It was a cut that had to be done. The city council did what it did. I did not envision a situation in which city counselors would cut six hundred thousand dollars out of the health insurance line item that provides health insurance for everyone, including our teachers and retirees, who are teachers, and all of the other city employees. And I did not envision that they would take two hundred thousand dollars out of a short-term debt interest, which is what funds, it's part of our capital budget and how we get it funded. And it's, it, it could be very detrimental if it resulted, if we didn't replace that two hundred in our ability to borrow at good interest rates. And I can tell you, you're looking at, I think, some capital improvements, as we discussed this evening, and perhaps some building adjustments that affect the schools. So it's a matter of having to balance. So when they did that, what I realized was, I believe every teacher who is employed here would like to retain their healthcare. I know that everybody on the city side who is already employed would like to retain their healthcare. What happens is, it affects the ability of the superintendent and other departments. We have many vacancies in the city as well. It would affect the ability for us to hire those folks if we don't make that healthcare line item somewhat whole. And that, that doesn't just affect the schools, it affects the city. I mean, that does affect city positions, it affects the school positions as well. So it is my responsibility to be fiscally responsible for the whole city. And so I cannot tell you tonight that that is what I do. It was never a promise, it was the result of a discussion. If it came to pass that you needed that money at the end of the city council budget, then we, we could have another discussion about how to spend it. But the school system was afforded the one point one million, and I believe, which is what we're going to vote on tonight, I believe the superintendent was very responsible in how she utilized that spending. You know, it, it did emphasize staff. So I will not make that promise to you tonight. I never made that promise in the first time. And I, I have good reasons for how that money can be used going forward.
Member Johnson Musad, did you have anything else at this time?
No, thank you.
Okay, so then it's secretary Ekstrom, vice chair Martini, and it looks like member Denise has her hand up again.
Thank you. So I actually wanted to talk about Spanish as well. But the first thing I wanted to do is, what is traditionally considered middle school? When the, with the state, middle school is considered six to eight?
Generally, six, eight, seven, eight.
Okay.
I'm not aware of a commonality of having fifth grade connected to a middle school.
Okay. So I guess what I want to say then is, in eighth grade, students at the high school must take either French or Spanish.
They do.
So, and I'm expecting to get a lot of razzing or what have you for this. It isn't that they are not being taught Spanish or a foreign language in middle school. It is that there is not a Spanish teacher in the building that has one or two middle school grades. Yes? Eighth grade is considered middle school. They're being taught Spanish or French in eighth grade.
Our eighth grade does take Spanish or French, yes. They are housed at the high school, but the eighth graders do get the language course, yes.
So it is not the case that there is no Spanish offered at middle school grade levels? There is, and it happens in eighth grade.
That is true.
Who happens to be housed at the high school.
I think that, yes.
I realize I'm holding with the technicality, but in all essence, that is the case.
I think the, we offer Spanish or French to our eighth grade students. So eighth grade, middle school grade, I think, if we talk about it, middle school as the building, that is the, the difference.
Yes.
Versus grade levels, so yes.
Right, okay, thank you.
Vice chair Martini.
Well, I have a couple of specific questions about band at the middle school and high school levels. At GHS, band is an elective course, yes?
It's an elective, yes.
Yes. And at GMS, when is band offered?
I'm actually going to ask Michelle to speak to that because she would know her schedule better than I do.
So middle school band is offered during our UA classes and WIN classes, so six times a day. So there's six opportunities for students to participate in band or elect to take it.
So UA being Unified Arts, then a student could take band for a six-week rotation out of the year?
They would be in band the whole year. So that would be one of their electives through the entire school year.
And students choose which electives they take during their UA periods?
No, so that's the tricky piece.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, no.
I was going to say, where's my form?
They want to choose, but, but if they elect to do band, like at the beginning of the school year, then that's one of, that's one of their electives. They just are automatically in that throughout the whole school year.
So if they are in band, then they are not taking Spanish, theater, makerspace, PE?
They do have an opportunity during the other period. If it's, so if they're getting their lessons and participating in a grade-level band, there's another opportunity for them to, to take an additional elective throughout the school day. So they have two periods. One period is forty-eight minutes, the other period is thirty minutes. So in one of those periods, they could have health, PE, Spanish, makerspace, theater.
Okay, and if you had a choral teacher at GMS, would you split that time?
I think it would have to function as the, the band teacher and the, the choral teacher have to have dual purpose.
Right, okay, thank you. And, you know, I've been sitting here. I appreciated member Denise's questions about what exactly might be offered and what a plan might be in terms of fleshing out music instruction in, in GPS. And I would love to ask a whole slew of detailed questions about that right now, but I feel like there needs to be some kind of working group. I appreciate the conversation that you had with the two music teachers about their preferences, but I would, I would love to see a group along the lines of other groups that the district has sponsored for other topics that include all stakeholders and would be able to investigate things like why band enrollment has dropped so dramatically at GMS and what would attract more students to these programs and what have you. So this is not exactly related to the budget, but would you be willing and able to put together a group like that?
I think I shared earlier in the conversation, although it's been a lengthy conversation, that we are investigating why students are not electing band at the rate that they were previously. I think that, you know, that's something that we are looking to do internally with the building administrators and the other members of the department. Typically, the creation of courses is an operational responsibility. So, you know, that is how we were anticipating undertaking that work is, you know, administratively and working with families and the staff that's already in the department. So that is something we already talked about doing. I thought I had shared that, but potentially it did not actually get spoken. But that's something we've already started talking about.
Okay, is it going to have a name?
Is what going to have a name?
This, this.
No. No. It's just part of our job to do this. If we're going to create, like, folks in the community made it clear that they want us to expand opportunities in the music department, and we are very happy to do that. This thinking came up in, recently. So I don't have details yet. Quite frankly, Derek was not at work today. He is being very surprised to hear he may be getting a choral teacher, but he'll be very happy to hear that. So we need to do some work internally to figure out what that would look like. We would have to potentially come up with course descriptions, working with the music teachers. We'd have to do a, a course selection process with students at the high school to see if they would even want to take the courses. So there's a lot of logistics, and I'm, I guess I'm not necessarily seeing that the work would change if we called it something versus just coming to the end with, with the same information.
I think what's being asked for is a, a long-term plan specific for how GPS will go about enhancing the music program. So is that, is that going to come out of what you're talking about?
Yes.
As a document?
If that's what the school committee asks me to do, is produce a document that says that, that wasn't necessarily what I was speaking to. But yes, a long-term plan of how to grow the music program is what we've been talking about. So it's sort of, it's a little bit of the chicken and egg scenario right now. Do you provide the staff and hope people enroll? Or do we find out if there's an interest and then try to hire staff? I mean, we can go about it either way. We could hire staff and then find that very few students are interested in the courses. We run that risk. Or we put out there that we'd like to see if there's an interest in courses, and we find out we have, you know, all four hundred and fifty kids at the high school want to be part of chorus. It's, it, we have to pick somewhere to start, which is why I said, let's see if it's, if we have it, will they come? We could go the other way.
Right, yeah. Well, it's definitely a complex, multifaceted.
It is, so.
Topic, so.
If, if the committee would like a written document, you just, the committee can ask me to do that. I will produce a written document when the work is done. That is certainly feasible, but some of it may move year to year based on, you know, student choices, so.
Okay.
But that's.
So I, I'm asking for that. Is that something that I need to make a motion for?
Direct my, yeah.
I don't think we're at a point in the process where we could entertain that. I think we need to get through the budget decision-making that we have to do tonight, and then we can discuss further planning that we would recommend be taken on by the administration.
I appreciate that it's a longer-term discussion, but it does affect my thinking about the budget tonight. In regards to athletics, the middle school athletics program was reinstated on this original list from before. And I'm assuming, but I want to verify I'm right.
Yes, it was, we've put the funding back in, yes.
That, that represents the base funding for middle school athletics that we already had and does not include additional funds that are added in, on, on this document for middle school athletic equipment.
So what, what I can tell you is, to the best of my knowledge, but Andy's listening, he can correct anything I am saying, to the best of my knowledge, what was reflected as a cut would have been the entirety of the middle school costs for sports. And that exact same number was put back into the budget. So.
Okay.
Okay, so I think you're asking if there was more put back?
Right, I'm trying to figure out, are we putting this back and we are adding additional funds? I, because I think what member Denise was asking about from the budget subcommittee meeting was, was three line items in here. One was a fourteen thousand dollar increase in middle school athletics equipment. One was, I think, six thousand in increase, which is, you know, not as much for the same thing at GHS, and then twenty thousand dollars additional in the contracted services that you mentioned. So I'm, I'm trying to make sure that I understand what we're doing.
Okay, so give me, I found the middle school. Let me see, I just had it, now I lost it again. Middle school supplies, what that should reflect, but again, Andy's going to help me. What that should reflect is the increased cost for just equipment for the middle school program. So the. So the athletic... I don't wanna... We don't actually have an athletic trainer, but the required staff at games that I referenced for MIAA and the training room at the high school, that is exclusively for the high school, like the varsity and high school level teams. So that should only be reflected on the high school line. What was the third line you referenced?
It was the middle school athletics equipment line, which went from $6,000 to $20,000?
Yes, that $14,000, I believe, is a reflection of just the equipment needed to run the middle school sports. So we used Coach K, our athletic director, helps us create the budgets based on need and historic, you know, historic needs, too.
Okay, so your suggestion is to reinstate the base cost of the middle school athletics program and increase the equipment funding line? Those are added?
So what's in FY '24 under local for the middle school lines should total what was cut originally. So the 20 and the should be also the coaches, coach staff, coaches athletic staff was 11, 3, the 20 was 31, 348, so...
So those are not separate and additional, that is all within the 31,348?
Yes, yes, that's how we got there.
That's what I was trying to get to, thank you very much.
Sorry Paige, getting a little late.
Sorry for wading through all the weeds about that.
Yes, no, that's what that is.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Member Denise?
Not trying to get off-topic, but this is in regards to Glenn's comment to the mayor and the mayor's comment. My... I don't understand, because if I am quoting you exactly, which I'm going to, this 365,000 supplemental funding is no longer needed by the school department. That is what you put out in your memo to the city council. So my question is if... Well, I guess it's not a question, it's a statement. It is needed. We're here talking about this. This $365,000 could pay for the Spanish at the middle school five times over. So if you're coming here to tell me about your TechSMEX memories and then you're unwilling to talk about that, then I think that that's, you know, something that should be said. $365,000 is needed. It has never been no longer needed. Has there been a memo, did we send something out that said, oh, we don't need that anymore? I do not think so, so we need it.
Are there other comments or questions from the school committee at this point? Thank you to the administrators for being here, we appreciate your help and your support. Vice Chair Martini?
Just a couple. So... I was a bit taken aback by the mayor's question to the superintendent earlier about what was the rationale for cutting middle school Spanish. The rationale is that the school department budget is underfunded. The superintendent already very responsibly and somewhat painfully cut the proposed budget before we even started this discussion with the city side from 13% to 10%, and now we're having to cut further back to 8%. So of course, there are gonna be painful cuts, and that's why we're sitting here chewing over really difficult painful potential cuts, and we continue to lose things like music and foreign language and electives at the high school, all of which impacts our enrollment, which was cited as a major reason for cutting the budget, paradoxically. I have to disagree slightly with Member Extrum about the value of starting foreign language instruction at eighth grade. I'm glad that we have it at eighth grade and then the high school, but I think families in this area have other options for their student to receive foreign language instruction much earlier, including immersion instruction from kindergarten. And we are not going to be competitive if we are not offering foreign language instruction until eighth grade. That seems really potentially damaging to me. And with that in mind, I wanted to know from the superintendent if the school committee were to ask for the secondary choral teacher and for the middle school Spanish position to be added back in, what would you propose taking that from? That would be approximately $160,000.
I have to be frank, at this stage, I don't have a recommendation for reducing any of the local budget by $160,000. I think that we are pretty bare bones, and my fear, and I realize I have said this until it's nauseating, but anything that we put back in the grant, we will be back here talking about in FY '25. So the pain we have now, we will revisit. So I'm... I am so appreciative of the conversation and the challenge you folks have, and absolutely, if you want it in the budget, we will. Right now, the grant funding is the fastest way to fund it for FY '24 right now. And I actually don't know where I would take it from, other than cutting additional staff, and at this point, we've missed any contractual timelines to reduce any additional staff, which again, comes back to the challenge we're already having. So I honestly, I would need the committee to make suggestions to me about what the committee would like to see reduced out of the budget at this stage.
I have one related suggestion, but maybe it's more of a question. So in here, we have it that we would fund $169,050 in textbooks out of ESER funds. And we have talked before about the fact that textbooks can actually be considered a capital expense because of the length of time that the district uses them. I believe Karen had given us the shelf life of some of the
Old, yes.
textbooks that we have going on upwards of 10 or 20 years, and certainly for textbooks in fast-changing subjects like science. For example, that's really a little bit outrageous. So I wanted to know... I wanted to suggest and ask if it would be possible to make a capital request for that $169,000 and utilize those funds for the two teachers.
We can, but that's grant-funded. It's ESER funding, so it would still be gone in FY '25. But yes, if you want to do that, if the committee wants to do that, we can. But it only does it for a year, guarantees the salary for a year.
I was suggesting making a capital request from the city.
No, I know, but you're saying, you're talking about capital to fund the textbooks, so we're not using the grant funds for it, but that means the funding for the salaries is the grant funds.
Oh, right, I understand that, but...
So then it would only be funding for those positions for one year?
Right.
And then we'd be back to this conversation?
At least it gives us another year to strategize.
The challenge in that is a choral teacher, if we were to offer a position that was a one-year grant-funded, we would drastically reduce the potential for applicants. I mean, fairly.
Other comments right now?
I want to be clear, I don't disagree with Member Martini or Member Denise or the mayor. I think it's important that we offer foreign language. I'd love to see it start in kindergarten and keep on going. Strictly speaking, however, we do offer it at middle school. That's all at what is considered a middle school level. Now, I can't learn foreign language by attending class. The only way that I can do that is by actually being immersed in the language, which is not how everyone learns, and I understand that. And I don't know where I was going with that, I lost it, but anyway, okay. So anyway, I don't disagree, I just, you know, by... Anyway, that's it.
So let's regroup here. We still have more agenda to go through. I want to make sure we understand where we are at. This one-page sheet that is two-sided shows with the Xs which line items are eliminated in order to get us to the budget that is reflected here in this multi-page document. And I have not heard, other than just Member Martini's suggestion just now, that anyone has any solid recommendations for changes to this. Knowing that we have other items, other business to get through this evening, and knowing that we have talked about this now for about an hour and not come up with anything solid to make a change, I would like to try to introduce a motion to accept as presented the fiscal year FY '24 budget, fiscal year 2024 budget for the Greenfield Public Schools.
So moved. Second.
And any further discussion on that? I would like to say a few things since no one is jumping up. The first thing I would like to say is, we have all said very clearly that no one wants to make any of the cuts that we're making here, and no one wants to be, as a school committee member, responsible for those decisions. These are hard things. These are things I think all of us have thought about a great deal since this budget has unfolded with these very clear, difficult decisions. I also want to address a couple of things about budget realities. Budgets are moving targets. Personnel make decisions after tonight. Things change, like, oh hey, you got 20 new students that are homeless and they're living in the Days Inn that we didn't know about a week, two weeks ago. All of these things are realities that we will have to deal with. This is not a finite, rigid document. Just like I hope our strategic plan will be dynamic, our budget is absolutely dynamic. And also, for what it's worth, I want to address to the public that has been so supportive of our choices that we have to make tonight, that we hear you and we read what you send us, and we listen to what you tell us. And I'm very happy that folks have participated and engaged in sharing with us what they want. And with that said, we are elected to be the stewards of these funds. And I will gently use Strings for Kids as an example. It is $26,500 out of this budget. It is remaining in terms of the discussion and the motion that is on the table. That's a lot of money for less than 20 kids. I just want to say that very clearly. It's in the budget, but I don't necessarily think that we are being responsible stewards with something like that. And I heard my other committee members talk about, we need to do better to recruit. Great, let's make sure we do better to recruit then, and actually have a program that is reflective of the cost for it. And the final thing I want to also say, and again, very gently, the only folks that I heard discuss possibly getting rid of athletics are not folks that were on the school committee during the pandemic when we were asked to not bring back kids into in-person learning, but to bring back athletics. And these were irate, forceful parents and students who were upset, of course, because everything for all of us was upheaved. But to suggest that the possibility of taking away athletics could go unnoticed or unchallenged is... I'll just leave that there, let's not do that. And when we can, we need to protect all of the extracurriculars. And I don't want to judge music or athletics being one better than the other. They provide options for our kids, and we need to be the best stewards that we can be in the moment of these things. And the final thing I would say is that we thankfully, right now, have a really healthy relationship with the city council. And I hope that, should we get into a bind where we need to ask for a supplemental budget because something else has changed in this moving target of a document, that we would be able to do that during fiscal year '24. We saw it happen very publicly and very, in a very complicated way with the Greenfield Police Department this year, and trying to right the ship there. And I would hope that we're in a position where we could move forward with asking for additional funds if we were to need to do that. And I will shut up now and ask for any further comments or questions from the committee. Member Johnson, we started, and then the mayor.
I'd just like to appreciate my fellow members who did ask questions about the athletics budget, because I learned a lot from the superintendent's answers to those questions, and I think that everyone was very responsible in not making motions to cut the athletics budget and change this budget after receiving the information about why the increase happened.
I'm going to agree with Chair Proetti and say that this budget was created several months and had to be approved several months before we really find out what we have in our leftover after the end of the year. So you may not, I'm not, this is, I'm just making a comment here. There may be the ability to have a supplemental budget request prior to FY... Prior to the beginning of the year, prior to already being in, well, we will be as of July 1, into FY '24, so it is not unheard of. But until we have an idea of what the full accounting of the impacts of of funding and our revenues, particularly our revenues, are, we will not know what's available for any kind of supplemental budget. I would like to ask the superintendent, I too watched the Budget Subcommittee meeting this afternoon until it started to get windy and rainy, and my computer just, the city hall just kind of went dead. So I thought that was a sign I should leave before I, you know, got caught there all night long. So I thought I heard you say that, at the end of the day, you are shy $185,000. Is that, what was that figure relating to? It was a little unclear to me.
We were hoping to not use the second million of ESER funds for salary, but based on the priorities I had heard from the Budget Subcommittee about our special education and 504 needs, we added those salaries in, which reduced the 1.1 that city council reallocated. So we still have approximately, Andy, I think it's 185 of grant money still being utilized of the extra million. Yes, it's 185, 200 and... No, I'm lying. No, I'm not lying. It's 185, 202,000 of that second million. We had, I had tried, wanted to get all of that billion out of the salary line, but because of the 504 coordinator and ETL positions, it ate in a little bit to the 1.1 that city council reallocated.
So you're saying, maybe?
I'm sorry.
It's late. You're saying that what you have left in ESER is 185?
No. No, we had used, we knew we were using about a million dollars in, in ESR funds for salary. With the budget cuts, we added another million. When city council reallocated funds, I was hoping to get that whole second million out of the grant.
Okay.
And we're 185,000 short of getting the whole second million out.
Okay. Well, I think that's what I asked in the beginning. You're 185 short.
Well, we're not, when you said it that way, I was taking it to mean you thought we were 185 short on being at a balanced budget.
Oh, okay.
And that's not the case.
Okay.
If it's in relation to the goal around the grant money, then yes.
Okay, thanks.
You're going to be quick, right?
Yeah, I have a clarifying
Sure.
question about those numbers. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that what would actually be required if we were to have these things without digging into the second million of ESR funds in order to fund the disability services that we just talked about and middle school Spanish and the secondary choral teacher, that would be 185 plus about 160, which would be about $345,000, which is just about exactly the amount of the financial orders that were rescinded by the mayor. Is that, is, am I being fairly accurate?
So I will trust your math. The funding for the, the two staff you referenced, is the disability services are already reflected in this version of the FY 24 budget? So we do not need those additional funds. It would really be additional funds for the Spanish and the choral. But I think your total is accurate.
Thank you.
Anything further before we vote? Wonderful.
I'm sorry. I, I'm gonna vote no unless there is some kind of proposal to preserve middle school Spanish and to fund the music teacher. So can I make an amendment?
Tell me more. What are you asking? A friendly amendment to what, and what would it be?
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment
Yep.
that the school departments make a capital request for the textbooks and fund the middle school Spanish position and a secondary choral teacher.
But how would we do that? So capital is on a calendar that is not conducive to making that request right now. A capital, the next time capital comes up is in November for FY 25.
That's correct. The, the capital budget's already been approved in, by the, by the city council.
It would be in FY 25.
It would be for your FY 25.
Thank you. Can the purchase of those textbooks be delayed until then?
I mean, technically, yes, but those biology textbooks are the ones that are 10-plus years old. But can we wait? We can do almost anything that the committee would like. I don't know that I would recommend it, given the state of the textbooks and that, and the science standards have changed. So it's, you know, we can do anything that the committee would like.
I understand, but I feel like it's kind of in for a penny, in for a pound. What's a few more months if we can preserve some of our funds? So...
I think we just have a different, I think we have a different perspective. I struggle with having, doing this again with staff in a year when the grant funding is gone. So that's why I prioritize staff. But that is, you, you folks let me know what you'd like and we will make it work. And if, if we need to wait, we will. But I just want to share, those are very old.
So what is your, what is your friendly amendment?
That the school department make a capital request to fund textbooks in the amount of $169,050 and fund the middle school Spanish position and a secondary choral teacher.
But the Spanish and choral, excuse my ignorance, can't be a capital request. So where are you asking that we would go for that money?
I'm not telling the superintendent where to go with that money. I understand it would be coming out of the grant, but...
Is there a second on the friendly amendment?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion.
Well, no, you don't. A friendly amendment is something that the person who made the motion can either accept or reject
Thank you.
with approval from the person who seconded.
Who made the motion?
I think it was you.
You did.
Oh, God, I would not, I would not in any way accept that. I'm sorry. Yeah. There we go. Thank you, Susan.
Are we back to discussion on the original?
I'm waiting for Member Exstrom to decide whether she would accept the friendly amendment. I'm sorry, I thought that was clear.
But you already didn't accept it, so...
I did not make the motion. Member Exstrom made the motion.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, you need to decide if you would accept the friendly amendment.
No. Because the, the funding for the books wouldn't happen until '25. And we're talking about a Spanish teacher and a choral teacher in '24. So it isn't, it, no, no.
Member Johnson Musaad, did you have something? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I guess to make this something other than just absolute up or down vote, it would help if members had a chance to make motions about changing the budget before we made a motion on approving it. So that's the challenge about the way that the...
We talked, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, we talked about it, but there wasn't, I mean, I don't know if other members experienced this. I sometimes find it confusing about when, if I want, if I wanted to make a change to the budget, when do I make that motion?
We talked for an hour and no one made a suggestion of what to change.
So you're saying that during that hour of conversation would have been the time when people should, could have said, I move to change the budget in this way and get a second and so on? Is that what you're saying?
We should at least have discussed it that way. I'm, I would have thought that that was clear. That's what we were discussing, is the budget and any options that we had to change around the items, for lack of a better word, that were x-ed out on this sheet and choose something else.
I think some of these items did come up in discussion. I just don't know if members necessarily felt like, okay, now's the time when you can make a motion to make a change, you know? So now we're on basically a motion to accept it or not accept it without people being able to put forward motions about actually changing it.
Someone did try to make a motion to change it and that was not accepted.
No, that wasn't a motion. That was a request for a friendly amendment. So that's what I'm saying is, if folks, I feel like the order of the meeting should have been, are there any motions for changing the budget as presented? Then, and then to make a motion on the, the budget as the school committee had deliberated and voted on any changes that people requested. So I just wonder if you might consider, Member Exstrom, withdrawing your motions to up or down, accept or reject this budget and allow members who may not have realized that they could have made motions to change the budget to do so.
Well, I think by virtue of the motion, it is to open discussion regarding the budget. And so I don't think that the option to suggest any change has been closed.
Correct.
It's just an option to accept the budget as it is.
But the way that it's, I mean, I guess you're saying that, so I guess if people don't want a friendly amendment, Member Martini, for example, could make a motion to have a non-friendly amendment. That we would actually vote to change the motion.
It's not that we don't want a friendly amendment. That friendly amendment was not accepted.
But if the discussion is open, then it's open to making a motion.
Another friendly amendment or asking again for the motion to be withdrawn and, and give another option for a motion.
It seems very, I have to echo what Member Johnson Musaad said. Okay, it's almost 10:00 PM, so we're all exhausted and I get it. But it is very confusing in this committee to know when it is appropriate to make motions. There is no information about this. And in the past, when I've tried to make a motion, I've often gotten shut down because I didn't do it at the right time. So there should be a way for people to understand when it is time to make a motion. And if we're talking about the budget during that time, if that's when we're supposed to make motions, then we should make one. And if, so I don't see how Member, how Vice Chair Martini is out of line making the motion at the time when we're supposed to discuss and make the motion.
She, for clarification, she wasn't out of line. We chose not to accept the friendly amendment. She isn't out of line. You can, you can ask for a different friendly amendment to change the motion that's on the table. Secretary Exstrom, go ahead.
So I don't, because it is late, I'm not verbalizing properly, but I don't feel like this discussion is closed about making changes if we want to. Granted, yes, we did talk about it before we made the motion. But I don't think that this discussion is closed. And if someone wants to talk about, you know, maybe we should cut this or maybe we should cut that, I think it's worth having a discussion about and then a motion being made or a friendly amendment being made at that time. I don't, I'm not interested in, in not having a robust discussion around this at all.
Weren't we just having a robust discussion? So when has the door been closed on making a motion about the budget? About changing the budget? Is that, I guess, my question?
There is no closed door. Please make a amendment, a friendly amendment to the motion to accept as it stands, if you would like. And it needs to include details of what you would change.
A friendly amendment is not the same as a body getting to vote together on a member's motion to change a budget. That is just a request to one individual who can say yes or no, whether to accept the motion. So what we're missing here as a democratically elected body is the opportunity as a democratic body to actually hear people's motions to change the budget before we vote on the, the budget as a whole. I, I don't understand why that's so hard to understand.
With all due respect, we talked for an hour and no one made a motion and no one made any suggestions of changes.
I think what you're hearing, though, is that members weren't aware in terms of process, perhaps because of the, some confusion, about when to make those motions. So that's, I think, what, from a process point, where we, we lack tonight.
Maybe I'm not being clear. I'm not saying that we shouldn't consider changing and can't have that discussion by any means. I mean, if someone wants to, I don't know, I'll pick something random, not, again, random. If someone feels like the office and general supplies line should be changed, I'm open for that discussion to happen right now. We're just, all we've done is make a motion. We haven't gotten to the point where we're all going to vote on the motion.
So Vice Chair Martini could make a motion right now?
I don't, I...
So...
Let me, let me try this. Secretary Exstrom, would you withdraw your motion that's on the table that we're discussing? So we can allow folks to make a different motion if they so choose.
Sure.
There we go. Please proceed. It's open for discussion. Vice Chair Martini, go ahead.
Okay. With that in mind, then maybe it makes sense for, the only reason I said what I said as an amendment was because there was a motion put on the table before I could say it. So I move that the school department make a capital request in the amount of $169,050 for the purchase of textbooks and fund the middle school Spanish position and secondary choral teacher that was proposed.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. I would like to clarify. I think that we need to amend your motion to include that the capital request would be in FY 25, for clarification. And I'm not clear on what you are asking with the other piece of it. Are you asking for us to request that the superintendent find funds, move funds around to fund the things you are requesting, the Spanish teacher and the other piece?
Yes, and I accept your friendly amendment.
Okay, so the friendly amendment for the FY 25 capital request, Susan Farber, has been accepted? Does the seconder accept it? Who seconded it? Do you accept that?
I accept it.
Okay. And then, can you give us some more detail on the second part of your motion?
No, because...
Hang on, Susan Farber has a question.
Was the amount 116 or 160?
It's $169,050.
And you're asking that to come from where?
I am not going to offer clarification on that. What I had said before is that I, I'm not telling the superintendent exactly where to take it from, though I understand she has said that it would come from the grant.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Actually, I'd like to ask the superintendent, so, or, or Vice Chair Martini, because it is late and I need to be clarified. If those, so if it goes to capital requests for 2025, what that means is that we would be using the same books we have now for another year? Yes? Okay. Thank you.
And the 160, whatever it was, piece, can, can we have some discussion on how? Or perhaps, I mean, I don't understand how we would go about making choices around that. Can you expand on that?
At this point, what we would do is increase the amount of ESR money that we are using for salaries for FY 24. So we would basically swap out, instead of textbooks in this line, we basically could replace the wording on this and put "fund" to "staff" from ESR.
Any other questions or, or comments on this? So I saw the mayor first and then Member Johnson Musaad.
What I just, I think what I just heard the superintendent say, so this is a clarifying question. You would then, if, if this were to pass, you would do this middle school Spanish teacher and, what was the other one? Member Martini? Position?
It would be a secondary choral teacher.
The choral teacher, okay, that's what I thought. That would come out of ESR.
Yes.
So it would be funded by a grant for at least one year.
For only one year?
Yeah.
Correct.
Clarifying, unless there is...
Member Johnson Musaad was first.
Are you able to, Member Martini, and then I'll see mine?
I'm clarifying from what the mayor said, that that would be the case unless there were a supplemental financial order from the mayor's office that was approved by the city council. Yes?
I will say that, given the current resources that I am aware of, that is how I would fund this request if asked. Certainly, if there were other funds that become available to the district, we would potentially relook at that. Thank you.
Yeah, and so just, Superintendent, I think you said before that funding from a grant position, from a grant would make it challenging in terms of hiring.
I believe that is the case, yes.
And also, I think what you're trying to do is avoid the fiscal cliff. It's considered a best practice, as much as possible, not to hire staff with grant funds like this.
The, yes, I am trying to avoid losing a lot of staff that is grant-funded in FY 25.
Thank you.
Further discussion on this? Okay, so we're voting on the motion introduced by Member Martini regarding FY 25 capital request for textbooks and the two personnel items. Anyone abstaining from voting? And any no votes? So we have one, two, three, four, five. So five no votes, so the motion fails. So I would like to introduce a motion to accept as presented the fiscal year 2024 budget for the Greenfield Public Schools.
So moved.
And is there a second on that?
Second.
And further discussion? Please.
I just want to make sure that everyone feels like they've been able to say what they want to say. I know that nobody, I'm looking at you, Chair. It would kill me when I ask that, but I don't want anyone to walk away feeling like they haven't said their piece.
And it can still be voted down and we can try again. And it can still be voted down and we can try again. Any further discussion? Any abstentions from voting on this? Any no votes? We have two no votes. So we have one, two, three, four, five yes votes, so the motion passes. Okay, thank you guys. We still have, yeah.
I'm sorry, I want to make sure that I have this correct. Who are the no votes or the nays? I said, Member Denis.
Member Denis and Vice Chair Martini.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go through as quickly as we can with the next item. So item number eight is censure of a member. I want to just revisit why this is on here. And I want to say this was my item that I was introduced in May and we tabled it and it is introduced again. And I am not interested in actually voting on this because what I have learned is that folks do not understand what is in our policy manual or what it means to use Robert's Rules. And so you have two items in your packet that are helping to educate on this process. We have a policy, it is, and it's in your packet, BBAA, that very clearly states that we do not share executive session information outside of executive session until we vote to make the minutes public. That was not held to by the mayor. And then, I don't remember who it was, but at the meeting in May when we tabled this, someone said they wanted to hear from our legal rep, our legal counsel about the ramifications of a censure motion. And so I've included some information about Robert's Rules, that this is nothing legal, this is the body saying, no, 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 you can't do that. It's like a little reprimand. And so I want to make sure folks just understand. And I would just like to move forward to the next item unless anyone else would like to comment. Member Johnson Musad.
I appreciate that we're not voting on this tonight. In the document that you handed out, one thing that the first chapter says, however, the organization can often solve discipline problems by taking the member or officer aside and talking with him or her about it, which saves both the member and the organization embarrassment. I think that that would have been an appropriate remedy or having a discussion about it. Then it also discusses other penalties for members not following our own policies, such as a motion that the member must apologize, a motion that the member must leave the hall during the remainder of the meeting. So there are other remedies besides censure, which is, I think, considered more severe than that. And I just wanted to also say that while I agree that the mayor was out of line with our, with our policy when she wrote the op ed, I also think that other members of this body have broken open meeting law, violated our own school committee policies and displayed unprofessional conduct toward members of the public and other school committee members. And those members have not been censured. So I just thought that was an important context for the public to be aware of. And I just hope that in the future, we can work together to do better, to follow the law, to follow our own policies and to work with each other in a constructive, respectful manner.
Any further discussion? Mayor Rita Gardner.
I appreciate that we will not be voting on this tonight. And I appreciate the comments that Glenn just made. I certainly have given this a lot of thought and I, I do believe you are actually accurate. And now that I've reread the policy. But I don't think he's been inaccurate either. So I will, I think there was some discussion before about perhaps we all need a little refresher in open meeting law. And at some point, that might be a good idea too. But I can certainly appreciate the difficulty with which we've come to the decision to not take a vote. And I accept it very much.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, so we'll move on to the superintendent evaluation tool. In May, we made, we had a long discussion about the tool that we used last year not being okay, the tool that I brought forward as a modification not being okay. And we decided we would have an ad hoc committee to address this. And I did talk about with the officers, the structure of this committee. And I, I also talked with Member Denis about chairing this committee. And I think what my officers don't know is that after we decided the committee makeup would be Member Denis as the chair, Vice Chair Martini as a member and Member Wall as a member, I could not, in my heart or my whole body, ask Member Wall to do one more thing for the school committee. And so I've actually decided that I will have it be me that will serve on that committee with Vice Chair Martini and, and Member Denis as the chair. And in your packet, you have an updated subcommittee spreadsheet for, that reflects all of this. In addition to, I do want to mention that Vice Chair Martini has done some wheeling and dealing in this and said, I'll serve if someone else does the wellness committee. And so I agreed to do the wellness committee as well. And all of that is reflected in the subcommittee updated list that you have in your packets. And I would like to, I do think we usually vote on the subcommittee assignments as a committee. Yeah, Member Johnson Musad's voting or nodding his head. I'm looking at Secretary Exstrom and she's not, I don't think you even know I'm talking, so. But could I have a motion to, this is actually listed under the chair's report, but seeing as it's related directly to this item, could I get a motion to accept the updated subcommittee assignment list as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Great, any discussion of that? So we'll move right to a vote. Any abstentions? Any no votes? Okay, that passes unanimously. We do need to talk about a charge for the superintendent evaluation tool ad hoc committee.
Hold on.
Yeah.
I want to be clear, I, because you've made this, you've been confused about this previously. What you presented to us last time is still going to be used this time? The reason that it was going to come back to us is because it was all cattywampus and all the paperwork that was being sent to us.
What, what we talked about at May's meeting is that we would have an ad hoc committee that would put the tool together.
For next year, not for this year.
For FY '25?
Yes.
For FY '25?
Yes.
Okay, and you're saying I'm confused about that and you're right?
Yes.
Okay, so the one for FY '24, for, for the current, I'm sorry, the one that we're going to use this year is the one that the ad hoc committee has not seen yet because you took what I put together and you fixed it.
Yes.
That's what you're saying. And the ad hoc committee can still look at that and, and fix it further if they need to.
Yes.
And then, related to the charge of the ad hoc committee, I have a suggestion and obviously we do not have to do it exactly this way. But I would ask someone to move that superintendent evaluation forum ad hoc committee, subcommittee, be charged with revising the evaluation tool used by the full school committee in a format agreeable to both the superintendent and the committee for a written evaluation of superintendent progress towards goals in FY '24, in 2024, sorry. Sorry, I'm, it's late. So I can read that again. I would ask that someone move the superintendent evaluation forum ad hoc subcommittee be charged with revising the evaluation tool used by the full school committee in a format agreeable to both the superintendent and the committee for a written evaluation of superintendent progress towards goals in 2024. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
And, okay, and discussion of that? Member Denis, please.
I just want to say that I have five rubrics of superintendent evaluation, one of which is our old one that we don't like. So I have four new ones and our old one. And I have included them in the drive, but I have not wiped them clean.
So with all due respect, can you discuss this first with your subcommittee and then bring it back to us in July?
Oh, okay.
Or August?
Okay, well, I had a question about that because in your motion.
Please, questions are fine.
I'm getting to that. In the motion, you said revise the instrument that we use. But I'm bringing new instruments, so is that?
That's fine.
Included in your, okay, I'm just checking your language.
That's fine, I appreciate that, that's totally fine. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, so we will move to a vote. Are there any abstentions? Any no votes? And that passes unanimously. Okay, and we've done the tree donation and I can't see. Okay, so for the next one, we have, I would like to do a consent item on the two Greenfield High School trips that are within the packet and on your agenda. I would ask for a motion to accept as a consent item and as presented, both Greenfield High School trips, one to Paris, one to the Mediterranean coast, both occurring in April of 2024.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion of this? How lucky they all are, right? Well, you can chaperone, yep. Stranger things have happened than that, Mayor. Okay, so we'll move to a vote. Any abstentions? Any no votes? And that also passes unanimously. So we've got, okay, requests for new agenda items. Let's please just be brief considering the hour and we do still have an executive session. Any requests for new agenda items? Member Johnson Musad.
I'd like to repeat my request for the school committee evaluation to be on the next agenda.
That will absolutely be on the July, the self-evaluation you're talking about, right?
Yes.
Yep, that is planned for July. It just was too much for June. And any other requests? Member Denis.
I'd just like to see if we could get an update on the calendar.
I don't have an update. I would, I would ask if, if Member Exstrom has anything she would like to say.
Yeah, I have an update. It's very loosely formed. I've got, because, so I've got in it currently the MASC pending calendar events. And I, we just received something today about November conference as well as the monthly meetings here in the budget subcommittee. That's what's on there right now. And I'll, I wanted to put a little bit more into it before I invited everyone to it to view it. But it, but it does exist.
We could potentially have that on the July.
Sure.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, without, if there's no, I have lost all words. If no one disagrees, we would consider the presentation of the strategic plan to be the report from the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for tonight. Is there anyone who would have an issue with that? Wonderful. Okay, I will be brief on my report. We already had the subcommittee assignment piece. And then this second piece, the move to hybrid meetings, is not anything we would vote on tonight. It is something, it's basically an informational item that we need to move to a hybrid format. We actually, I have been discussing this with the superintendent for some time and the officers for some time. And today, literally, we got our first request from the public to move to a hybrid format. So it is now time for us to do that. Ironically, on the night we couldn't get anything to work is the night we would introduce this. But we would actually discuss and vote in the, at the July meeting on this item. And is there any discussion at this time? Okay, so, subcommittee reports? I'm just going to go and order budget.
Our discussion here was a, was a larger, robust discussion of the budget subcommittee meeting, so we're all good.
Okay, and what about policy?
Very briefly, we will be getting back on our first Thursday 11:00 AM meetings. I apologize to the public for the daytime meeting. It's the only time that we could find the, all the members could meet. And just to say that there's a lot of moving pieces that Christine and I are talking about because there's things with, with our, with our computer that needs to be looked at, our computer policies, there's things where MASC is simultaneously revising some policies. But our plan is to try to really get our policies review completed because once it is, then MASC can host it and we can have it online and searchable. But just so folks are aware, that may mean that we will be coming back to you to review things that we may approve in the next few months. We might come back to you in six months and say, we got another update for you. But lots of moving pieces, but the main goal is to try to get that policy, policies up on that searchable website.
Thank you. And what about redistricting?
The superintendent sent out a survey this week to all of the teachers with the options of one, which was the grade banding of K1, K1, 2, 3, and 4, 5. And then the other option was 2B, which is redraw the lines for the schools and move the fifth grade back into the elementary schools. So we're trying to get teacher input and then we will have a subcommittee meeting and bring it to the full school committee.
Thank you for that. Gentle question, could we have an update in your parent update, your weekly update that lists those and explains them for folks?
Yes.
Those two options?
Yes.
Awesome, but yeah, just something, so people who aren't here or who were listening and didn't get it.
I, yes, and I will remind people that the summary of options is always on the front page of the website. That document remains. But yes, I had included a reminder last week, I think, that the re-envisioning of our school facilities had not been forgotten. It was still in, in process. But yes, I will do an update.
Thank you. And the collaborative has an update. And there is a document, right, in the, in our packets for the collaborative. Go ahead, Member Denis.
I know it's very hard to read, it's very tiny. So it is in the Google Drive in a folder called the collaborative. And this is just pure data, it's just, just for fun. They recently started collecting data about the districts in Franklin County and how they utilize the collaborative services. So you can go and look at this sheet and find out how we use our, our collaborative services. Where are we not using it? Should we use more? Should we use less? How do we compare to other districts? It's purely just a data table and they're starting to collect these things and disseminate them to board members. So I thought I would pass it along so you can see where we are in the larger picture.
Any questions or discussion for Member Denis on that? Thank you for bringing it forward.
You're welcome.
Can I share that?
Please.
I spoke with the executive director, Todd Gazda, who shared that we are one of the most active districts in using their resources.
Next to frontier, we're like a top user.
And most of the services that we don't use are paid services. So we are using a lot. So it was nice to see on the spreadsheet.
Thank you, thank you both. And we have also, Member Denis, an item on legislative advocacy or resolution that is also in our packets, looks like this.
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Okay, hold on, I'm so sorry, it's so late and I don't have all of the screens open. That I had open and I'm very sorry, it's going to take me just a second. I gave the motion to Susan Farber. The motion just said that I move that the Greenfield School Committee accept the resolution for S335 as presented. Would you like me to read the resolution?
It's short enough, I think it makes sense for you to read it, please.
It's very, it's very, very short. S335, whereas we believe special education is a public service and should be funded appropriately through Circuit Breaker, we resolve to support changing the special education reimbursement from 75% to 90%.
Any discussion on this? Oh, we need, I'm sorry, we.
Second.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Martini made the second. Any discussion on this? Yes, please.
Now, I don't have any problem supporting this resolution. But I think that there, and this is part of a larger picture, I'm, I'm so thankful for all the people who want us to advocate from the state for more funding to come to the schools. However, what I know is that everything that we advocate to the state for, everyone in the state has to agree that that's something that they want, or a majority of people. A much easier, and it has to go through bills and all of those things, I understand the process. A. A, what I think really needs to happen is Greenfield needs to have a more robust economy, so that it can stand on its own, and we don't have to rely on the state. There is a finite amount of money that's available. And if Greenfield as a city would become more business-friendly, meaning attract more businesses and do what they can to get them to come into town, and get behind expanding businesses, we would go much further and would see a return on all of that hard work that I know everyone is doing.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you. It's kind of off on a tangent. Let's talk about this, the, this.
Okay.
You don't,
I, I, I don't think it's a tangent. I think that we keep doing all these things, and it's a resolution, and that's great. However, if we really want to get more funding, there is a, a more stable way and, and a better plan to make that happen. And it would be helpful for the entire city, not just the schools.
Okay. Thank you.
That's my statement.
Member Denise.
I don't disagree with Member Exstrom at all. My hope with this was just to begin to get a foothold into completing our policy BJ, which is our legislative policy, and my hope is that, of course, we're, we're at the deadline. Like, there's, June 30th is the deadline for this, so there's no way to bring forward all the resolutions and do the whole thing. But I wanted to start the process, because the legislative session is two years. So when this comes up again, I would, I plan to bring forward a motion to create a Resolution Subcommittee, so that we could maybe plan to do all of the things that we think are appropriate for our district and our community, to make one document, and then to send it into the Resolution Committee at MASC, which is what they do, and then they will send it on. And I had a long talk with the MASC Vice President, and he said not to be too fussy about language. He said just pull it together, get an idea of what you all want to do, and make sure you send it to us by the deadline. So this is more like a long-term plan of making this policy happen. So this was just the beginning of a toehold to even make a folder of what, how we want to write resolutions, and what it should even look like, and what it should even be. So in the folder that I created that says "Resolutions" in the drive, there is an example of the Resolution Committee document that MASC created for 2022, so you can see how that looks when it's all, comes together as a Subcommittee. So this was just an attempt to do something I think is really important, and, you know, pass or fail, this is like a start on doing some real advocacy work at the state level. And I agree with you, but I'm gonna try to do things instead of not doing anything.
Any further discussion? Vice Chair Martini.
I wanted to ask the superintendent to very quickly, in a very small nutshell, explain for people who don't understand what the Circuit Breaker is, what it is, and the potential impact this might have on the school district.
It's a reimbursement structure for high-cost special education services. We get reimbursed a percentage over a certain amount, which I won't get into. We get reimbursed a percentage. Right now, it is 75% of the cost over that threshold. This bill proposes to raise it to 90. So we could get reimbursed additional of the costs over the threshold that is currently set.
Thank you. And I would also note that there is a separate bill to lower that threshold as well.
Thank you both. Any further discussion on this? So we'll move to a vote. Are there any abstentions? I will abstain. Any other abstentions? Okay, any no votes? Okay, so the rest is six yes votes. Thank you. And we need a motion for executive session. We will return to open session. The exec, motion for executive session includes exemption reason number three, which is to discuss-
I'm sorry, are we not doing correspondence?
That is, those are just noted items.
Okay, okay, sorry. Just checking, just checking.
Motion to enter executive session for exemption reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I do declare. And like I said, we will return to open session. Is there a motion? So moved. And a second.
Second.
And we do have to do a roll call vote for this. Secretary Exstrom, you ready?
Yeah, Member Denise?
Yes.
Secretary Exstrom, yes. Member Johnson Musad?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martini?
Yes.
Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
There we go now.
Yes.
Unanimous. We are in executive session.
We're, we're ready to come back from our technical break there, technical bio break. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call us back to order. Oh. Not quite yet, sorry. False alarm. There's been a few of those. We still have an issues, Philippe, I'm afraid to ask. We're good now? Okay, thank you. So for those who were joining us from the, any of the live feeds, I apologize, we had an issue with the system, and it needed to be rebooted, rebooted. We are back. Our microphones are working again. If you are here in the room, or you could hear it at home, the system isn't making that funny clicking noise anymore that was driving everyone crazy. So let's keep going.
Okay. So wherever we were, I'm starting here. So we are, the, the draft of the FY '24 budget that you have reflects that there is included a 504 coordinator, and included a full-time ETL for early child, childhood, that's an educational team leader, someone who facilitates special education team meetings and communication with parents. The goal of these two is that we are able to provide services to families in a more time-efficient manner, holding the meetings, getting paperwork out to families. So I feel like this would be something important for the district, especially given our recent reviews with Dussey, and the feedback from the Subcommittee at our second-to-last meeting. We also included funding for middle school athletics, again, and included funding that we had reduced for middle school extracurriculars. And of course, looking at the proposal for the strategic plan, this just made sense to add the funding back in. So I would like to go back to the music conversation, because we understand that, I say we, administratively, we've talked. I also, Karen and I had a great conversation with our elementary music teachers, and to talk about some things that they would like to do, that they think would enhance, you know, whether or not the committee chooses to fund additional positions, that's, that's your, that's your decision, and that is something that we will implement if you do. But I want you to hear sort of the thinking from, from all of us, and then from our music teachers. The music teachers are very excited to incorporate more chorus into their lessons. They're very excited. We talked about that we would ensure that there were, the ability to have district-wide concerts again, that they, you know, they haven't happened since COVID. Last year, we couldn't really do them, because there were still a lot of restrictions around distance and, and instruments. This year, that doesn't exist, and, you know, that, it wasn't something that got prioritized again to happen. I think, you know, between the pandemic and then coming back, the focus did not go back there, but it's something that we can easily accommodate. And the two music teachers were very excited to do that. So we also talked about the potential for, you know, potentially doing ukuleles for classrooms, and they could do little band-like in the, in the music classrooms. I know that's not what people think of when they think of a band, but to get all of our students to play an instrument together within the confines of a music class. They were talking about things like the ukulele. I asked if they could think of something besides the recorder. I'm sure some people can play it great, but, so it's variety around that. So they're all, they're all on board and very excited. One thing that I talked about with them was, you know, the position that I did reduce, again, needing to make decisions about resources, was the 4th grade band, and asked, is that something that you want? You want me to advocate for the committee to put back into the budget? And they said, not so much. We'd rather, if the committee's gonna put music position back in, we would like if it was a secondary chorus teacher. So if that is something, I don't know if that's something that you folks feel that you want to have a conversation about, but I just want to share that they're sort of thinking of the music program differently than what it was. We talked about ways to do instruments, and we have in the community, we do have Strings for Kids that our, our students participate in. We do have Music of Franklin. So between the students already in Music of Franklin, and the numbers that are anticipated for Strings for Kids, we potentially could have 70 students next year doing instruments outside of the public schools. So we could offer outside-of-school band lessons, instrument lessons, we talked about that. There are some logistical challenges, including the unavailability of at least one of our teachers to do anything outside of school. And we don't want to pull away from other, from other places that have programs going that our students are, are participants in. So, you know, I think that would be looking at talking to families about what would make the music, the band, more appealing at middle school and high school. They talked about, there is natural attrition at some points with band. As you get into the upper high school, there are times when students, you know, are competing. The courses that they want to take compete. That's especially true in a small high school. They just give that up for other things, or other opportunities that they want to try. Excuse me. But the decline in the number of students enrolled in music in Greenfield certainly has been much more dramatic than we would want. We agreed that there was some impact with the pandemic. But the middle school band primarily has had an extreme decrease in enrollment, so, you know, Michelle and I have been talking about that, and Derek and I have been talking about the band at the high school, so it's not something we're not aware of. But I just want to share that we are, we are working on enhancing our music program. We do value the music program. So that's a point for you folks, but I just point out that when we did this revised FY '24 budget, the funding for this, our portion of the Strings for Kids subsidy was included again in the budget. It's a proposal. Again, you folks have the ultimate decision-making on anything that's funded. So, but I want to put that out there. We've, we've been having conversations, and we think there are ways that we can enhance the program potentially with a choral teacher, if you folks want to do that right now, or without, and we can still do some things that we believe will enhance the program.
Thank you. Thank you for the overview and the, the details as well. So we do have to have a vote. I think that I would like to take discussion before we do a motion at this point, and make sure we're clear on what our options are and what folks are thinking before we do that. So I would open it up at this point for questions and comments from committee members. I can tell Vice Chair Martini is ready. No?
What, did you see my?
Go ahead, yeah.
When you say secondary chorus teacher, did you mean a teacher at the secondary level, or did you mean an addition- or did you mean an additional teacher?
Thank you for that clarifying question. I meant a teacher at the secondary level. So I, what I should say is, there is potential, if the committee is inclined, but we could talk about the challenges with that after, but what I meant was an additional music teacher at the high school, secondary, middle school, high school, because our elementary music teachers felt that it would be the best use of funds if a position was restored to not go to 4th grade band again, but instead to use that FTE, full-time equivalent, to support an increase in the chorus program. So I think the short answer would be, if you want to enhance, don't put back the position I cut, do a different one, which would be an additional music teacher to support middle school, high school, so that we could have band and chorus as separate entities. Does that make more sense?
Yes. And what would be the cost of the secondary, approximate cost of the secondary choral teacher?
I'm going to bend over and ask Andy to give me the salary that we use for budgeting purposes for a, he's coming. I know, I can hear you percolating in there.
I know the minute I start talking, he's gonna have the answer. So I'm waiting. While, while he's looking for that, what was the cost of the 4th grade band that was cut?
So, I wouldn't actually be able to share that because, again, that would have to be something Andy could look at back in his records, because what happened is the 4th grade band teacher is still in the district. So he took the position vacated by a different staff person back in the winter, and so it was actually that salary that was reduced in the budget. So.
So you want, you want the middle school teacher salary we use for a placeholder?
Correct.
We use the $80,346.
Okay. Eighty thousand, three forty-six, which is master's top step, I will be honest. We've been, we've been getting a lot of applicants in the district that are veteran teachers, which we're very happy about, but to be conservative with budgeting, we do use the higher step. If I could share just a challenge with that, if the committee would like to reinstate a position, is that we either would have to reduce something else to offset that cost, or we could assume it would be grant-funded for, for the sake of discussion tonight, and then after we go through the summer, where traditionally every school district has people who leave and others hires, and we look at what the difference is between what we had budgeted versus the cost of any new hires, it could be possible that the new salary could be reallocated to the local after that process, in which case it would not be grant-funded in actuality. But for planning purposes, if you chose, you could do that and leave it grant-funded. The negative there would be, if it continues to be grant-funded, it potentially could be vulnerable for FY25. So, did that, sorry. I know this makes sense in my head. I tried to say it out of my head in a way that makes sense, but.
You, you are definitely making sense.
Okay, thankfully.
Okay.
Vice Chair Martini, do you have more?
Just one clarifying question. Strings for Kids is left in?
In this, yes, yes.
Is it also in this?
Yes, oh yes. Everything that is in, that is not with an X, is in the FY24 budget document that you have at your place.
Okay. And, and therefore, the middle school Spanish position that is still X-ed out here is not reflected here.
Correct.
Thank you.
I saw Secretary Extrum, Mayor Wieda Gardner, and then Member Denis.
So the, from our budget committee discussion, or budget subcommittee discussion, the String for Kids is a, we're in a different spot than where we were previously, and it's now included here. I'm curious, where is it within this?
It's, it's generally not. We fund it out of the school choice.
Okay.
But it's, we don't utilize that amount of school choice to fund something else.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Wieda Gardner?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Just so I understand, so you're saying that item number 15, reduce McKinney-Vento transportation by 20,000. You're saying you, that is a, you can do that and still provide what, what McKinney-Vento requires?
As of now.
Yeah.
You know very much.
Yes, I do. That's why, that's why I'm asking.
Correct. But what we did is look at trends, and Jake looked at what his, his requirements are, and what we've been doing, and we have the ability, in his estimation and in ours, Andy's and mine, that at this point, based on what we're looking at right now, we can take that reduction.
Okay. And just so I'm clear on this, this most recent conversation on the choral teacher, Member Martini asked, what would the cost be, and I think I heard you say, to reinstate that person, it would be eighty thousand, three forty-six?
So, we would be putting a position back into the budget?
Yeah.
There's no person that's connected to it currently?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the 4th grade band position that I had taken out of the budget prior to it going to school committee, that person, that teacher, took a vacant music teacher in the district. So he is wonderfully employed with us still. So if the committee wanted to add a music teacher back into the budget, we use a flat figure as a placeholder for staff, because we don't know who's coming in as the applicant. So we use that top step as a budget placeholder, and based on the new contracts for FY24, the top step of the masters would be just over eighty thousand.
Okay. And this brings to mind, actually, that was a question I was gonna lead with, and then it escaped me, but you mentioned, which I think was a good thing, of using, taking positions out of the grant and funding them with the additional money. But, and I get the point about attrition as we get closer to the end here. How many vacancies do you have still, even with the funding? If you know.
We, we have unfilled positions, but they're budgeted.
Okay.
So, actually, I think all, all of the positions that are vacant, I'm going down the list in my mind, should be already, would have already been funded out of the local, to the best of my recollection, because they are generally special education and related service providers, like our BCBA's, school psychologist position's still open, two speech pathologists. So those, those positions were not added when we got the grant funds. Those were previously funded in the local. So those are already budgeted.
But how many is that?
Oh, off the top of my head, I don't know.
Okay. Under 10, more than 10?
It's part of the challenge in answering your question, is that we have additional positions posted because of a variety of reasons. I'm thinking about actual, we have no teacher assigned to a position. I would say we're probably close to 10, but I can send you a more solid number after tonight.
Okay, that'd be great. And I was particularly moved by Tom Bavarka's plea for the middle school Spanish teacher. I, I had the good fortune to be raised on the Texas-Mexico border from the time I was in the 8th grade till I finished high school, and I quickly had to learn the language, because we were prominent, you know, most of my classmates were Hispanic, and almost all of our teachers were also Hispanic. Now, that doesn't mean they taught the class in Spanish, well, some of the times they did, but if they had to translate for someone. This is long before we had that type of assistance that we get now for second language speaking. So, I do believe, especially when I know that the people that we are, the immigrants and refugees that we're accepting into the community now, actually, the primary language is Spanish for those people. So, I'm curious, is there an explanation why that was, I mean, did it have to do with student enrollment? Did it have to do, what is the explanation for the cut, per se?
Well, again, so I go back to the first comment that I made when we talked about this, is that none of these were recommended, but.
I understand, believe me.
One of the, one of the scenarios was that specials elective courses at the elementary schools, at the middle school, one of the things that we need to ensure we can do when we offer these elective courses is provide preparation periods for our classroom teachers. So, you know, students go to these elective courses so that the teachers can have their prep periods. And one of the things that has happened is that we had more elective teachers than we had the need for, based on the numbers of students. So, the students at the middle school didn't select courses as they do at the high school. There's rotations that they go through. So, when we had to strictly look at budget numbers and challenging decisions, one of the things that we looked at were the numbers of elective courses we had and the numbers that we needed. One of the things that, you know, one of the other pieces that we looked at is that the students are, get a, like an intro. How do you describe it, Michelle? It's a six-week rotation? Okay. So they get six to 10 weeks of exposure to the language each year. They do get enrolled, all of our students get enrolled in Spanish or French in 8th grade at the high school. So it was, it was one of the options that we talked about. Again, it's not that we don't value the language. We, we had to make some challenging suggestions about things to reduce. And, again, when we look at the positions that we considered putting back into the budget, we really were only able to offset 815,000, or 880,000, I apologize, of the million dollars of grants. So, you know, we still were using 125,000 of that extra million, so it's 1.1 million in ESER funds. So again, if, when we look at, money was restored to the school budget, but if we went back to everything that we had originally, using the $2 million, positions vulnerable again the following year. So it's balancing. Certainly could be restored for next year, and then I do fear some of these positions, if they can't be moved into the local, we will be back having these very difficult conversations the following year.
Okay, I understand difficult cuts completely.
Yeah.
So, are you saying to me, and I think I heard it correctly, that there, there's no Spanish taught at the middle school right now, but there is an exposure to the language?
They, they do learn some of the language.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's a six to 10-week exposure to it. But they, they do.
Well, thank you. I, I would advocate that we try to find a way, but I understand what you're saying. So, thank you. Helped to have the explanation.
And Member Denis, and then Member Johnson moves on.
My best memory, and my family's best memory of the middle school experience was the 5th grade band, going to the concert, watching the kids. It was packed, everyone was there. And this was, what, 2022? This was not that long ago. Everyone was there, everyone cried. It was wonderful, it was a whole thing. I don't understand how that program isn't surviving, or is having low enrollment, when it was so heartily beloved by the community. There were so many kids involved. So my question, I have a couple of questions. How do you see the future of the music program now? What classes, can you give us a rundown of what classes are gonna be offered in which grades? And what sort of outreach are you gonna be doing to the students to get them involved in these programs? Because there must be some sort of thing that's going on if these kids are not actively being pushed into these programs. I mean, they should be put into music. And now I've talked to some of the people who are involved in Strings for Kids and Music of Franklin, and the number one thing that I hear is that they're not getting a response or a connection with the district that is helping to make that happen. So, I'd like to hear about the outreach you're planning, and I'd like to see if you could give us a rundown of what classes we can expect, since you're saying that you want to enrich the music program. What does that look like?
So, I can't give you a list of classes without having known that you were gonna want that. I don't have them.
Well, I mean, you were mentioning like the choral teacher, so are we talking about a choral class in middle school and a choral class in high school? So.
Potentially.
Okay.
I'd have to sit with the principals, with the music teachers, with Mr. Cypek, the band teacher, and see what, what potentially would enhance, what would collaborate with the band, that type of thing. So, it's, it's a potential. When I met with the elementary music teachers, I can tell you, when I said, "What, what do you think would do it, enhance things?" They said, "Get a choral teacher." So, that's why I'm sharing that as a potential, a potential opportunity.
And there's no band now in middle school?
There is.
Or there is a band in middle school?
There is.
Okay.
It doesn't have a high enrollment, but there is band.
Okay, so there's band in middle school, and there's chorus in middle school?
No, there's no chorus.
In elementary?
No. There is the ability for our music teachers to embed additional singing through the general music classes.
Okay. And that's gonna be at which, at which level's middle school and high school? I'm just trying to get it.
That's elementary.
Elementary, okay. Elementary is the possibility of.
No, they're definitely going to embed more chorus into the elementary music classes. That is definitely going to happen.
And then the secondary choral teacher would be at the high school level?
And middle school.
And middle school. Okay, okay. So, at the high school and the middle school. Okay, so you're looking at, you like have a, a program, and then plus Strings for Kids in addition to that. Okay.
And Music of Franklin.
And Music of Franklin.
So, but that would mean, and Elizabeth, I appreciate you saying that we need to, you know, encourage kids to enroll in the band and chorus, but they have to want to do those. So, like, we, we encourage them, they get the information about what the courses are, they have exposure through rotations at the elementary, but if it's an elective course, then, you know, our students, when they meet with their guidance, their guidance counselors, and talk about their areas of interest and things that they would like to engage in as elective courses, you know, those are courses that the students need to want to participate in.
I understand. I mean, I'm, I'm a classically trained musician, some of you don't know this, but that I went through very, very intensive musical training all the way through the whole thing. So, I'm a big advocate for music education, because I've been through it from the seed to the whole thing. We could, I could bust out German opera right now, you don't even know. But, so my other thought is, I'm, I'm of the same mind as, as the mayor on the middle school Spanish teacher. I come from a Spanish-speaking city. I know what it's like to be immersed in another language, and although I did not come from it fluent, I definitely was able to speak, and it inspired me to travel the world, and I went to many Spanish-speaking countries, and only having it in high school would not have enabled me to do that. And. And also, younger children learn languages faster and more efficiently than older students. So, I mean, I don't, I mean, I understand what you're saying about the money and the electives and the six to 10 weeks, but it's not enough. And I think it's part of a larger picture, because when we come back at some point in time, maybe next year, we'll have the conversation about school choice or whatever. What is going to make parents want to enroll their kids is having a secondary language program, and having a robust music program, and having a sports program, which we seem to have a lot of, maybe sports is what we're supposed to be investing all our money in, I don't know. But I'd sure like to see if we've increased the sports funding at the high school level, because I would, I would support cutting a whole lot of other things before the middle school Spanish, because that seems really to be an important thing. And, and more importantly, a time period in people's lives that they're going to lose the efficiency of learning the language. And we don't have enough diversity in Greenfield, we don't have enough Spanish speakers in Greenfield that we are all interacting with on a regular basis. And the only way to increase that diversity, to interact with that community, is to learn some of the language. So I just don't think it's enough. So I guess I don't have like an answer to that, but I'd like to know if there's, I'd like to see if we've increased the sports funding at the high school level, because I did watch the budget subcommittee, and it seemed like we might have done that.
Um, you think we did increase sports funding at the high school, athletics?
Yeah.
We, we might, Andy, can you check to see if the athletic, I mean, I know it went up some, but do you have a, can you let me know how much? Some of the increase in the athletics at the high school was in part as an increase to the cost of the equipment. So just... The other piece that was reflected in the athletic budget is that we have had trained staff in the training room during our sports. Go ahead, Andy.
As the increase is the contracted services.
The contracted services, okay. So we have staff that not only have to attend by MIAA rules our hockey games and our football games, we also have trained staff. We have a physical therapist and a nurse practitioner that man the training room during season, which is basically September through the end of May, which is sports season. And that had not been completely reflected in the budget prior, so we're ensuring that it's there. You have something else, Andy?
Yes, in addition to revolving account, I mean, if you look at them updated as of May, that's in a deficit, so the funds that the athletic program is collecting isn't covering what it apparently had, had done in the past. So the total athletic budget, when you take into consideration the revolving account, we needed to cover the fact because we can't have a deficit in our revolving accounts.
Did you, were you able to hear, Melissa?
Yeah, I, I was, thank you. I mean, call me naive, but I would be, as a parent, I'd be into cutting some sports in favor of a Spanish teacher, or something along those lines. Because I think that we excel, we really give the money to that, but this is something that I do not think that we should be cutting at all. So I can't, I can't support cutting a Spanish teacher, but I am really glad to hear your music program plans. Thank you.
So I saw member Johnson Musad, and then secretary Ekstrom, and then vice chair Martini.
Maybe folks can correct me if I'm getting some of this history wrong, but the superintendent put forward her budget that already included substantial cuts, and then it went to the mayor. The mayor made drastic cuts, and the community really pushed back. And the mayor, in response to that, my perception was, made a financial order for $365,000 for the schools to kind of offset some of the damage that had been done in her original budget. Then a group of counselors worked together to try to restore, get it back to the superintendent's budget, assuming the mayor would be good on her promise of that $365,000. And so now we're looking at these, and I think it's very clear that the schools could really use $365,000. It's not that we don't need those funds. So I would like to ask the mayor if you would be willing to restore the $365,000 you had promised to the schools.
Well, thank you for, Chair Prowety, may I speak?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for that. And I take offense at the word drastic cuts. I have a responsibility, this is the point at which I do wear two hats. I am a longtime school committee member, if you count previous and now, nine years. I've been through nine budgets. They are always difficult, and there's always the tension between the budget that has to fund the schools and the budget that has to fund the city. And they're really not two budgets, they are one budget at the end of the day. And it has to balance. So in this particular point in time, at the point in time that the budget was put together, it would not have been able to be balanced if there weren't substantial cuts on both sides. I had already cut 2.7 million dollars from the city budget at the point at which it was given to the city council. So that was just as hard as what you have to do tonight, tonight, we have to do tonight, and what the superintendent had to do, but I had to do it alone. So I, it wasn't a drastic cut that I enjoyed making, it was a cut that had to be done. The city council did what it did. I did not envision a situation in which city counselors would cut $600,000 out of the health insurance line item that provides health insurance for everyone, including our teachers and retirees, who are teachers, and all of the other city employees. And I did not envision that they would take $200,000 out of a short-term debt interest, which is what funds, it's part of our capital budget and how we get it funded. And it's, it, it could be very detrimental if it resulted, if we didn't replace that 200 in our ability to borrow at good interest rates. And I can tell you, you're looking at, I think, some capital improvements, as we discussed this evening, and perhaps some building adjustments that affect the schools. So it's a matter of having to balance. So when they did that, what I realized was, I believe every teacher who is employed here would like to retain their healthcare. I know that everybody on the city side who is already employed would like to retain their healthcare. What happens is, it affects the ability of the superintendent and other departments, we have many vacancies in the city as well. It would affect the ability for us to hire those folks if we don't make that healthcare line item somewhat whole. And that, that doesn't just affect the schools, it affects the city. I mean, that does affect city positions, it affects the school positions as well. So it is my responsibility to be fiscally responsible for the whole city. And so I cannot tell you tonight that that is what I do. It was never a promise, it was the result of a discussion. If it came to pass that you needed that money at the end of the city council budget, then we, we could have another discussion about how to spend it. But the school system was afforded the 1.1 million, and I believe, which is what we're going to vote on tonight, I believe the superintendent was very responsible in how she utilized that spending. You know, it, it did emphasize staff. So I will not make that promise to you tonight, I never made that promise in the first time. And I, I have good reasons for how that money can be used going forward.
Member Johnson Musad, did you have anything else at this time?
No, thank you.
Okay, so then it's the secretary Ekstrom, vice chair Martini, and it looks like member Denise has her hand up again.
Thank you. So I actually wanted to talk about Spanish as well. But the first thing I wanted to do is, what is traditionally considered middle school? When the, with the state, middle school is considered six to eight?
Generally, six, eight, seven, eight.
Okay.
I'm not aware of a commonality of having fifth grade connected to a middle school.
Okay. So I guess what I want to say then is, in eighth grade, students at the high school must take either French or Spanish.
They do.
So, and I'm expecting to get a lot of razzing or what have you for this, it isn't that they are not being taught Spanish or foreign language in middle school, it is that there is not a Spanish teacher in the building that has one or two middle school grades. Yes? Eighth grade is considered middle school, they're being taught Spanish or French in eighth grade?
Our eighth grade does take Spanish or French, yes. They are housed at the high school, but the eighth graders do get the language course, yes.
So it is not the case that there is no Spanish offered at middle school grade levels? There is, and it happens in eighth grade.
That is true.
Who happens to be housed at the high school.
I think that, yes.
I realize I'm mulling with the technicality, but
Yes.
But in all essence, that is the case.
I think that we offer Spanish or French to our eighth grade students, so eighth grade, middle school grade, I think, if we talk about it, middle school as the building, that is the, the difference.
Yes.
Versus grade levels, so yes.
Right, okay, thank you.
Vice chair Martini.
Well, I have a couple of specific questions about band at the middle school and high school levels. At GHS, band is an elective course, yes?
It's an elective, yes.
Yes. And at GMS, when is band offered?
I'm actually going to ask Michelle to speak to that, because she would know her schedule better than I do.
So middle school band is offered during our UA classes and WIN classes, so six times a day. So there's six opportunities for students to participate in band or elect to take it.
So UA being Unified Arts, then a student could take band for a six-week rotation out of the year?
They would be in band the whole year. So that would be one of their electives through the entire school year.
And students choose which electives they take during their UA periods?
No, so that's the tricky piece.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, no.
I was going to say, where's my form?
They want to choose, but, but if they elect to do band, like at the beginning of the school year, then that's one of, that's one of their electives, they just are automatically in that throughout the whole school year.
So if they are in band, then they are not taking Spanish, theater, makerspace, PE?
They do have an opportunity during the other period. If it's, so if they're getting their lessons and participating in a grade-level band, there's another opportunity for them to, to take an additional elective throughout the school day. So they have two periods. One period is 48 minutes, the other period is 30 minutes. So in one of those periods, they could have health, PE, Spanish, makerspace, theater.
Okay, and if you had a choral teacher at GMS, would you split that time?
I think it would have to function as the, the band teacher and the, the choral teacher have to have dual purpose.
Right, okay, thank you. And, you know, I've been sitting here, I appreciated member Denise's questions about what exactly might be offered, and what a plan might be in terms of fleshing out music instruction in, in GPS. And I would love to ask a whole slew of detailed questions about that right now, but I feel like there needs to be some kind of working group. I appreciate the conversation that you had with the two music teachers about their preferences, but I would, I would love to see a group along the lines of other groups that the district has sponsored for other topics that include all stakeholders, and would be able to investigate things like why band enrollment has dropped so dramatically at GMS, and what would attract more students to these programs and what have you. So this is not exactly related to the budget, but would you be willing and able to put together a group like that?
I think I shared earlier in the conversation, although it's been a lengthy conversation, that we are investigating why students are not electing band at the rate that they were previously. I think that, you know, that's something that we are looking to do internally with the building administrators and the other members of the department. Typically, the creation of courses is an operational responsibility. So, you know, that is how we were anticipating undertaking that work, is, you know, administratively and working with families and the staff that's already in the department. So that is something we already talked about doing. I thought I had shared that, but potentially it did not actually get spoken, but that's something we've already started talking about.
Okay, is it going to have a name?
Is what going to have a name?
This, this?
No. No. It's just part of our job to do this. If we're going to create, like, folks in the community made it clear that they want us to expand opportunities in the music department, and we are very happy to do that. This thinking came up in, recently, so I don't have details yet. Quite frankly, Derek was not at work today, he is being very surprised to hear he may be getting a choral teacher, but he'll be very happy to hear that. So we need to do some work internally to figure out what that would look like, we would have to potentially come up with course descriptions, working with the music teachers, we'd have to do a, a course selection process with students at the high school to see if they would even want to take the courses. So there's a lot of logistics, and I'm, I guess I'm not necessarily seeing that the work would change if we called it something versus just coming to the end with, with the same information.
I think what's being asked for is a, a long-term plan specific for how GPS will go about enhancing the music program. So is that, is that going to come out of what you're talking about?
Yes.
As a document?
If that's what the school committee asks me to do, is produce a document that says that, that wasn't necessarily what I was speaking to, but yes, a long-term plan of how to grow the music program is what we've been talking about. So it's sort of, it's a little bit of the chicken and egg scenario right now. Do you provide the staff and hope people enroll, or do we find out if there's an interest and then try to hire staff? I mean, we can go about it either way. We could hire staff and then find that very few students are interested in the courses, we run that risk. Or we put out there that we'd like to see if there's an interest in courses, and we find out we have, you know, all 450 kids at the high school want to be part of chorus. It's, it, we have to pick somewhere to start, which is why I said, let's see if it's, if we have it, will they come? We could go the other way.
Right, yeah, well, it's definitely a complex, multifaceted
It is, so
topic, so.
If, if the committee would like a written document, you just, the committee can ask me to do that, I will produce a written document when the work is done, that is certainly feasible, but some of it may move year to year based on But some of it may move year to year based on, you know, student choices. So.
Okay.
But that's.
So I'm asking for that. Is that something that I need to make a motion for?
The committee would have to direct my.
I don't think we're at a point in the process where we could entertain that. I think we need to get through the budget decision-making that we have to do tonight, and then we can discuss further planning that we would recommend be taken on by the administration.
I appreciate that it's a longer-term discussion, but it does affect my thinking about the budget tonight. In regards to athletics, the middle school athletics program was reinstated on this original list from before. And I'm assuming, but I want to verify I'm right.
Yes, it was, we've put the funding back in, yes.
That represents the base funding for middle school athletics that we already had and does not include additional funds that are added in on on this document for middle school athletic equipment.
So what I can tell you is, to the best of my knowledge, but Andy's listening, he can correct anything I am saying, to the best of my knowledge, what was reflected as a cut would have been the entirety of the middle school costs for sports, and that exact same number was put back into the budget. So.
Okay.
Okay. So I think you're asking if there was more put back?
Right. I'm trying to figure out, are we putting this back and we are adding additional funds? Because I think what Member Denise was asking about from the budget subcommittee meeting was three line items in here. One was a $14,000 increase in middle school athletics equipment. One was, I think, $6,000 in increase, which is, you know, not as much for the same thing at GHS, and then $20,000 additional in the contracted services that you mentioned. So I'm trying to make sure that I understand what we're doing.
Okay. So give me, I found the middle school, let me see, I just had it, now I lost it again. Middle school supplies, what that should reflect, but again, Andy's going to help me, what that should reflect is the increased cost for just equipment for the middle school program. So the athletic, I don't want to, we don't actually have an athletic trainer, but the required staff at games that I referenced for MIAA and the training room at the high school, that is exclusively for the high school, like the varsity and high school level teams. So that should only be reflected on the high school line. What was the third line you referenced?
It was the middle school athletics equipment line, which went from $6,000 to $20,000?
Yes. That 14,000, I believe, is a reflection of the, just the equipment needed to run the middle school sports. So we use, Coach K, our athletic director, helps us create the budgets based on need and historic, you know, historic needs too.
Okay. So your suggestion is to reinstate the base cost of the middle school athletics program and increase the equipment funding line? Those are added?
So what's in FY '24 under local for the middle school lines should total what was cut originally. So the 20 and the, should be also the coaches, coach staff, coaches, athletic staff was 11, 3, the 20 was 31, 3, 48. So.
So those are not separate and additional? That is all within the 31,348?
Yes. That's how we got there.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Thank you very much.
Sorry for wading through all the weeds about that.
Nope. That's what that is.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Member Denise.
Not trying to get off topic, but this is, this is in regards to Glenn's comment to the mayor and the mayor's comment. My, I don't understand because if I'm quoting you exactly, which I'm going to, this 365,000 supplemental funding is no longer needed by the school department. That is what you put out in your memo to the city council. So my question is if, well, I guess it's not a question, it's a statement. It is needed. We're here talking about this. This $365,000 could pay for the Spanish at the middle school five times over. So if you're coming here to tell me about your Tex-Mex memories and then you're unwilling to talk about that, then I think that that's, you know, something that should be said. $365,000 is needed. It has never been no longer needed. Has there been a memo? Did we send something out that said, oh, we don't need that anymore? I do not think so. So we need it.
Are there other comments or questions from the school committee at this point? Thank you to the administrators for being here. We appreciate your help and your support. Vice Chair Martini.
Just a couple. So I was a bit taken aback by the mayor's question to the superintendent earlier about what was the rationale for cutting middle school Spanish. The rationale is that the school department budget is underfunded. The superintendent already very responsibly and somewhat painfully cut the proposed budget before we even started this discussion with the city side from 13% to 10%, and now we're having to cut further back to 8%. So of course, there are going to be painful cuts, and that's why we're sitting here chewing over really difficult, painful potential cuts, and we continue to lose things like music and foreign language and electives at the high school, all of which impacts our enrollment, which was cited as a major reason for cutting the budget, paradoxically. I have to disagree slightly with Member Extron about the value of starting foreign language instruction at eighth grade. I'm glad that we have it at eighth grade and then the high school, but I think families in this area have other options for their student to receive foreign language instruction much earlier, including immersion instruction from kindergarten. And we are not going to be competitive if we are not offering foreign language instruction until eighth grade. That seems really potentially damaging to me. And with that in mind, I wanted to know from the superintendent, if the school committee were to ask for the secondary choral teacher and for the middle school Spanish position to be added back in, what would you propose taking that from? That would be approximately $160,000.
I have to be frank, at this stage, I don't have a recommendation for reducing any of the local budget by 160,000. I think that we are pretty bare bones, and my fear, and I realize I have said this until it's nauseating, but anything that we put back in the grant, we will be back here talking about in FY '25. So the pain we have now, we will revisit. So I'm, I am so appreciative of the conversation and the challenge you folks have. And absolutely, if you want it in the budget, we will. Right now, the grant funding is the fastest way to fund it for FY '24 right now. And I actually don't know where I would take it from, other than cutting additional staff. And at this point, we've missed any contractual timelines to reduce any additional staff, which again, comes back to the challenge we're already having. So I honestly, I would need the committee to make suggestions to me about what the committee would like to see reduced out of the budget at this stage.
I have one related suggestion, but maybe it's more of a question. So in here, we have it that we would fund $169,050 in textbooks out of ESER funds. And we have talked before about the fact that textbooks can actually be considered a capital expense because of the length of time that the district uses them. I believe Karen had given us the shelf life of some of the.
Old, yes.
Textbooks that we have going on upwards of 10 or 20 years, and certainly for textbooks in fast-changing subjects like science. For example, that's really a little bit outrageous. So I wanted to know, I wanted to suggest and ask if it would be possible to make a capital request for that $169,000 and utilize those funds for the two teachers.
We can, but that's grant-funded. It's ESER funding, so it would still be gone in FY '25. But yes, if you want to do that, if the committee wants to do that, we can. But it only say, it only does it for a year, guarantees the salary for a year.
I was suggesting making a capital request from the city.
No, I know, but you're saying, you're talking about capital to fund the textbooks, so we're not using the grant funds for it, but that means the funding for the salaries is the grant funds.
Oh, right. I understand that, but.
So then it would only be funding for those positions for one year?
Right.
And then we'd be back to this conversation?
At least it gives us another year to strategize.
The challenge in that is a choral teacher, if we were to offer a position that was a one-year grant-funded, we would drastically reduce the potential for applicants. I mean, fairly.
Other comments right now?
I want to be clear. I don't disagree with Member Martini or Member Denise or the mayor. I think it's important that we offer foreign language. I'd love to see it start in kindergarten and keep on going. Strictly speaking, however, we do offer it in middle school. That's all I, at what is considered a middle school level. Now, I can't learn foreign language by attending class. The only way that I can do that is by actually being immersed in the language, which is not how everyone learns, and I understand that. And I don't know where I was going with that. I lost it. But anyway, okay. So anyway, I don't disagree. I just, you know, by, by, we, anyway, that's it.
So let's regroup, let's regroup here. We still have more agenda to go through. I want to make sure we understand where we are at. This one-page sheet that is two-sided shows with the Xs which line items are eliminated in order to get us to the budget that is reflected here in this multi-page document. And I have not heard, other than just Member Martini's suggestion just now, that anyone has any solid recommendations for changes to this. Knowing that we have other items, other business to get through this evening, and knowing that we have talked about this now for about an hour and not come up with anything solid to make a change, I would like to try to introduce a motion to accept as presented the fiscal year FY '24 budget, fiscal year 2024 budget for the Greenfield Public Schools.
So moved. Second.
And any further discussion on that? I would like to say a few things since no one is jumping up. The first thing I would like to say is, we have all said very clearly that no one wants to make any of the cuts that we're making here, and no one wants to be, as a school committee member, responsible for those decisions. These are hard things. These are things I think all of us have thought about a great deal since this budget has unfolded with these very clear, difficult decisions. I also want to address a couple of things about budget realities. Budgets are moving targets. Personnel make decisions after tonight. Things change, like, oh hey, you got 20 new students that are homeless and they're living in the Days Inn that we didn't know about a week, two weeks ago. All of these things are realities that we will have to deal with. This is not a finite, rigid document. Just like, I hope our strategic plan will be dynamic, our budget is absolutely dynamic. And also, for what it's worth, I want to address to the public that has been so supportive of our choices that we have to make tonight, that we hear you and we read what you send us and we listen to what you tell us. And I'm very happy that folks have participated and engaged in sharing with us what they want. And with that said, we are elected to be the stewards of these funds. And I will gently use Strings for Kids as an example. It is $26,500 out of this budget. It is remaining in terms of the discussion and the motion that is on the table. That's a lot of money for less than 20 kids. I just want to say that very clearly. It's in the budget, but I don't necessarily think that we are being responsible stewards with something like that. And I heard my other committee members talk about, we need to do better to recruit. Great. Let's make sure we do better to recruit then and actually have a program that is reflective of the cost for it. And the final thing I want to also say, and again, very gently, the only folks that I heard discuss possibly getting rid of athletics are not folks that were on the school committee during the pandemic when we were asked to not bring back kids into in-person learning, but to bring back athletics. And these were irate, forceful parents and students who were upset, of course, because everything for all of us was upheaved. But to suggest that the possibility of taking away athletics could go unnoticed or unchallenged is, I'll just leave that there. Let's not do that. And when we, when we can, we need to protect all of the extracurriculars. And I don't want to judge music or athletics being one better than the other. They provide options for our kids, and we need to be the best stewards that we can be in the moment of these things. And the final thing I would say is that we thankfully right now have a really healthy relationship with the city council. And I hope that should we get into a bind where we need to ask for a supplemental budget because something else has changed in this moving target of a document, that we would be able to do that during fiscal year '24. We saw it happen very publicly and very, in a very complicated way with the Greenfield Police Department this year and trying to right the ship there. And I would hope that we're in a position where we could move forward with asking for additional funds if we were to need to do that. And I will shut up now and ask for any further comments or questions from the committee. Member Johnson Musada and then the mayor.
I'd just like to appreciate my fellow members who did ask questions about the athletics budget because I learned a lot from the superintendent's answers to those questions, and I think that everyone was very responsible in not making motions to cut the athletics budget and change this budget after receiving the information about why the increase happened.
I'm going to agree with Chair Proetti and say that this budget. I'm going to agree with Chair Proetti and say that this budget was created several months and had to be approved several months before we really find out what we have in our leftover after the end of the year. So you may not, I'm not, this is, I'm just making a comment here. There may be the ability to have a supplemental budget request prior to FY, prior to the beginning of the year, prior to already being in, well, we will be as of July 1, into FY ' '24. So it is not unheard of, but until we have an idea of what the full accounting of the impacts of funding and our revenues, particularly our revenues, are, we will not know what's available for any kind of supplemental budget. I would like to ask the superintendent, I did, I too watched the budget subcommittee meeting this afternoon until it started to get windy and rainy and my computer just, at the city hall, just kind of went dead. So I thought that was a sign I should leave before I, you know, got caught there all night long. So I thought I heard you say that, at the end of the day, you are shy $185,000. Is that, what was that figure relating to? It was a little unclear to me.
We were hoping to not use the second million of ESER funds for salary, but based on the priorities I had heard from the budget subcommittee about our special education and 504 needs, we added those salaries in, which reduced the 1.1 that city council reallocated. So we still have approximately, Andy, I think it's 185 of grant money still being utilized of the extra million. Yes, it's 185, 200 and, no, I'm lying. No, I'm not lying. It's 185, 202,000 of that second million. We had, I had tried, wanted to get all of that million out of the salary line, but because of the 504 coordinator and ETL positions, it ate in a little bit to the 1.1 that city council reallocated.
So you're saying, maybe.
I'm sorry.
It's late. You're saying that what you have left in ESER is 185?
No, we had used, we knew we were using about a million dollars in ESER funds for salary. With the budget cuts, we added another million. When city council reallocated funds, I was hoping to get that whole second million out of the grant.
Okay.
And we're 185,000 short of getting the whole second million out.
Okay. Well, I think that's what I asked in the beginning, is you're 185 short.
Well, we're not, when you said it that way, I was taking it to mean you thought we're 185 short on being at a balanced budget.
Oh, okay.
And that's not the case.
Okay.
If it's in relation to the goal around the grant money, then yes.
Okay. Thanks.
You're going to be quick, right?
Yeah, I have a clarifying
Sure.
Question about those numbers. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that what would actually be required if we were to have these things without digging into the second million of ESER funds in order to fund the disability services that we just talked about and middle school Spanish and the secondary choral teacher, that would be 185 plus about 160, which would be about $345,000, which is just about exactly the amount of the financial orders that were rescinded by the mayor. Is that, am I being fairly accurate?
So I will trust your math. The funding for the two staff you referenced, the disability services, are already reflected in this version of the FY '24 budget, so we do not need those additional funds. It would really be additional funds for the Spanish and the choral, but I think your total is accurate.
Thank you.
Anything further before we vote? Wonderful.
I'm sorry. I'm gonna vote no unless there is some kind of proposal to preserve middle school Spanish and to fund the music teacher. So can I make an amendment?
Tell me more. What are you asking? A friendly amendment to what? What would it be?
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment
Yep.
That the school department make a capital request for the textbooks and fund the middle school Spanish position and a secondary choral teacher. Is that allowable?
But how would we do that? So capital is on a calendar that is not conducive to making that request right now. A capital, the next time capital comes up is in November for FY '25?
That's correct. The capital budget's already been approved by the city council.
It would be in FY '25.
It would be for your FY '25.
Thank you. Can the purchase of those textbooks be delayed until then?
I mean, technically, yes, but those biology textbooks are the ones that are 10-plus years old. But can we wait? We can do almost anything that the committee would like. I don't know that I would recommend it, given the state of the textbooks and that and the science standards have changed. So it's, you know, we can do anything that the committee would like.
I understand, but I feel like it's kind of in for a penny, in for a pound, what's a few more months if we can preserve some of our funds, so.
I think we just have a different, I think we have a different perspective. I struggle with having, doing this again with staff in a year when the grant funding is gone. So that's why I prioritize staff. But that is, you folks let me know what you'd like, and we will make it work. And if we need to wait, we will. But I just want to share, those are very old.
So what is your, what is your friendly amendment?
That the school department make a capital request to fund textbooks in the amount of $169,050 and fund the middle school Spanish position and a secondary choral teacher.
But the Spanish and choral, excuse my ignorance, can't be a capital request. So where are you asking that we would go for that money?
I'm not telling the superintendent where to go with that money. I understand it would be coming out of the grant, but
Is there a second on the friendly amendment?
Second.
So we have a motion.
Well, no, you don't. A friendly amendment is something that the person who made the motion can either accept or reject
Thank you.
With approval from the person who seconded.
Who made the motion?
I think it was you.
You did.
Oh, God, I would not, I would not in any way accept that. I'm sorry. Yeah. There we go. Thank you, Susan.
Are we back to discussion on the original motion?
I'm waiting for Member Exstrom to decide whether she would accept the friendly amendment. I'm sorry, I thought that was clear.
But you already didn't accept it, so.
I did not make the motion. Member Exstrom made the motion.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, you need to decide if you would accept the friendly amendment.
No, because the funding for the books wouldn't happen until '25, and we're talking about a Spanish teacher and a choral teacher in '24. So it isn't, it, no, no.
Member Johnson Musad, did you have something? Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess to make this something other than just absolute up or down vote, it would help if members had a chance to make motions about changing the budget before we made a motion on approving it. So that's the challenge about the way that the
We talked, I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, we talked about it, but there wasn't, I mean, I don't know if other members experienced this. I sometimes find it confusing about when, if I want, if I wanted to make a change to the budget, when do I make that motion?
We talked for an hour and no one made a suggestion of what to change.
So you're saying that during that hour of conversation would have been the time when people should, could have said, I move to change the budget in this way and get a second and so on? Is that what you're saying?
We should at least have discussed it that way. I would have thought that that was clear. That's what we were discussing, is the budget and any options that we had to change around the items, for lack of a better word, that were Xed out on this sheet and choose something else.
I think some of these items did come up in discussion. I just don't know if members necessarily felt like, okay, now's the time when you can make a motion to make a change, you know? So now we're on basically a motion to accept it or not accept it, without people being able to put forward motions about actually changing it.
Someone did try to make a motion to change it, and that was not accepted.
No, that wasn't a motion. That was a request for a friendly amendment. So that's what I'm saying, is if folks, I feel like the order of the meeting should have been, are there any motions for changing the budget as presented? And then to make a motion on the budget as the school committee had deliberated and voted on any changes that people requested. So I just wonder if you might consider, Member Exstrom, withdrawing your motions to up or down, accept or reject this budget and allow members who may not have realized that they could have made motions to change the budget to do so.
Well, I think by virtue of the motion, it is to open discussion regarding the budget. And so I don't think that the option to suggest any change has been closed. It's just an option to accept the budget as it is.
But the way that it's, I mean, I guess you're saying that, so I guess if people don't want a friendly amendment, Member Martini, for example, could make a motion to have a non-friendly amendment.
No, it's not
Where we would actually vote to change the motion.
It's not that we don't want a friendly amendment. That friendly amendment was not accepted.
But if the discussion is open, then it's open to making a motion.
Another friendly amendment or asking again for the motion to be withdrawn and give another option for a motion.
It seems very, I have to echo what Member Johnson Musad said. Okay, it's almost 10:00 PM, so we're all exhausted, and I get it, but it is very confusing in this committee to know when it is appropriate to make motions. There is no information about this, and in the past, when I've tried to make a motion, I've often gotten shut down because I didn't do it at the right time. So there should be a way for people to understand when it is time to make a motion. And if we're talking about the budget during that time, if that's when we're supposed to make motions, then we should make one. And if, so I don't see how Member, how Vice Chair Martini is out of line making the motion at the time when we're supposed to discuss and make the motion.
She, for clarification, she wasn't out of line. We chose not to accept the friendly amendment. She isn't out of line. You can, you can ask for a different friendly amendment to change the motion that's on the table. Secretary Exstrom, go ahead.
So I don't, because it is late, I'm not verbalizing properly, but I don't feel like this discussion is closed about making changes if we want to. Granted, yes, we did talk about it before we made the motion, but I don't think that this discussion is closed. And if someone wants to talk about, you know, maybe we should cut this, or maybe we should cut that, I think it's worth having a discussion about and then a motion being made or a friendly amendment being made at that time. I'm not interested in not having a robust discussion around this at all.
Weren't we just having a robust discussion?
We still are.
So when has the door been closed on making a motion about the budget? About changing the budget? Is that, I guess, my question?
There is no closed door. Please make a amendment, a friendly amendment to the motion to accept as it stands, if you would like. And it needs to include details of what you would change.
A friendly amendment is not the same as a body getting to vote together on a member's motion to change a budget. That is just a request to one individual who can say yes or no whether to accept the motion. So what we're missing here as a democratically elected body is the opportunity, as a democratic body, to actually hear people's motions to change the budget before we vote on the budget as a whole. I don't understand why that's so hard to understand.
With all due respect, we talked for an hour and no one made a motion and no one made any suggestions of changes.
I think what you're hearing, though, is that members weren't aware, in terms of process, perhaps because of some confusion, about when to make those motions. So that's, I think, what, from a process point, where we lack tonight.
Maybe I'm not being clear. I'm not saying that we shouldn't consider changing and can't have that discussion by any means. I mean, if someone wants to, I don't know, I'll pick something random, not, again, random. If someone feels like the office and general supplies line should be changed, I'm open for that discussion to happen right now. We're just, all we've done is make a motion. We haven't gotten to the point where we're all going to vote on the motion.
So Vice Chair Martini could make a motion right now?
I don't, I
So
Let me try this. Secretary Exstrom, would you withdraw your motion that's on the table that we're discussing so we can allow folks to make a different motion if they so choose?
Sure.
There we go. Please proceed. It's open for discussion. Vice Chair Martini, go ahead.
Okay. With that in mind, then maybe it makes sense for, the only reason I said what I said as an amendment was because there was a motion put on the table before I could say it. And so I move that the school department make a capital request in the amount of $169,050 for the purchase of textbooks and fund the middle school Spanish position and secondary choral teacher that was proposed.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. I would like to clarify. I think that we need to amend your motion to include that the capital request would be in FY '25, for clarification. And I'm not clear on what you are asking with the other piece of it. Are you asking for us to request that the superintendent find funds, move funds around to fund the things you are requesting, the Spanish teacher and the other piece?
Yes, and I accept your friendly amendment.
Okay, so the friendly amendment for the FY '25 capital request, Susan Farber, has been accepted. Does the seconder accept it? Who seconded it? Do you accept that?
I accept it.
Okay. And then can you give us some more detail on the second part of your motion?
No, because
Hang on, Susan Farber has a question.
Was the amount 116 or 160?
It's 169,050.
And you're asking that to come from where?
I am not going to offer clarification on that. What I had said before is that I, I'm not telling the superintendent exactly where to take it from, though I understand she has said that it would come from the grant.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Actually, I'd like to ask the superintendent, so, or Vice Chair Martini, because it is late and I need to be clarified. If those, so if it goes to capital requests for 2025, what that means is that we would be using the same books we have now for another year? Yes? Okay. Thank you.
And the 160, whatever it was, piece, can we have some discussion on how, or perhaps, I mean, I don't understand how we would go about making choices around that. Can you expand on that?
At this point, what we would do is increase the amount of ESER money that we are using for salaries for FY '24. So we would basically swap out, instead of textbooks in this line, we basically could replace the wording on this and put "fund" to staff from ESER.
Any other questions or comments on this? So I saw it with the mayor first and then Member Johnson Musad.
I think what I just heard the superintendent say is
What I just, I think what I just heard the superintendent say, so this is a clarifying
question. You would then, if this were to pass, you would do this middle school Spanish teacher and, what was the other one, Member Martini, position?
It would be a secondary choral teacher.
The choral teacher, okay, that's what I thought. That would come out of ESER.
Yes.
So it would be funded by a grant for at least one year.
For only one year.
Yeah.
Correct.
Clarifying, unless there is...
Member Johnson Musad was first.
Are you able to, Member Martini, and then I'll see mine.
I'm clarifying from what the mayor said that that would be the case unless there were a supplemental financial order from the mayor's office that was approved by the city council. Yes?
I will say that, given the current resources that I am aware of, that is how I would fund this request if asked. Certainly, if there were other funds that become available to the district, we would potentially relook at that. Thank you.
Yeah, and so just, Superintendent, I think you said before that funding from a grant position, from a grant would make it challenging in terms of hiring.
I believe that is the case, yes.
And also, I think what you're trying to do is, um, avoid the, the fiscal cliff. It's considered a best practice, as much as possible, not to hire staff with grant funds like this.
The, um, yes, I am trying to avoid losing a lot of staff that is grant-funded in FY '25.
Thank you.
Further discussion on this? Okay, so we're voting on the motion introduced by Member Martini regarding FY '25, uh, capital requests for textbooks and the two, um, personnel items. Anyone abstaining from voting? And any no votes? So we have one, two, three, four, five. So five no votes, so the motion fails. So I would like to introduce a motion to accept as presented the F, fiscal year 2024 budget for the Greenfield Public Schools.
So moved.
And is there a second on that?
Second.
And further discussion? Please.
I just want to make sure that everyone feels like they've been able to say what they want to say. I know that nobody, I'm looking at you, Chair, wouldn't, it would kill me when I ask that, but I don't want anyone to walk away feeling like they haven't said their piece.
And it can still be voted down, and we can try again. Any further discussion? Any abstentions from voting on this? Any no votes? We have two no votes. So we have one, two, three, four, five yes votes, so the motion passes. Okay. Thank you, guys. We still have, yeah...
I'm sorry. I want to make sure that I have this correct. Who are the no votes, or the nays? I see Member Denis.
Member Denis and Vice Chair Martini.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to go through as quickly as we can with the next item. So item number eight is censure of a member. I want to just revisit why this is on here. And I want to say, this was my item that I was, uh, introduced in May, and we tabled it, and it is introduced again. And I am not interested in actually voting on this because what I have learned is that folks do not understand what is in our policy manual or what it means to use Robert's rules. And so you have two items in your packet that are helping to educate on this process. We have a policy, it is poli, and it's in your packet, BBAA, that very clearly states that we do not share executive session information outside of executive session until we vote to make the minutes public. That was not held to by the mayor. And then, I don't remember who it was, but at the meeting in May when we tabled this, someone said they wanted to hear from our legal rep, our legal counsel about the ramifications of a censure motion. And so I've included some information about Robert's rules, that this is nothing legal. This is the body saying, "No, no, no, you can't do that. It's like a little reprimand." And so I want to make sure folks just understand, and I would just like to move forward to the next item unless anyone else would like to comment. Member Johnson Musad.
I appreciate that we're not voting on this tonight. Um, in the document that you handed out, one thing that the first chapter says, however, "The organization can often solve discipline problems by taking the member or officer aside and talking with him or her about it, which saves both the member and the organization embarrassment." I think that that would have been a appropriate remedy or having a discussion about it. Then it also discusses other penalties for members not following our own policies, such as a motion that the member must apologize, a motion that the member must leave the hall during the remainder of the meeting. So there are other remedies besides censure, which is, I think, considered more severe than that. And, um, I just wanted to also say that, while I agree that the mayor was, um, out of line with our, with our policy when, um, she wrote the op-ed, um, I also think that, um, other members of this body have broken open meeting law, violated our own school committee policies, and displayed, displayed unprofessional conduct toward members of the public and other school committee members. And those members have not been censured. So I just thought that was an important context for the public to be aware of, and I just hope that in the future, we can work together to do better, to follow the law, to follow our own policies, and to work with each other in a constructive, respectful manner.
Any further discussion? Mayor Rita Garner.
I appreciate that we will not be voting on this tonight, and I appreciate the comments that Glenn just made. I certainly have given this a lot of thought, and I, I do believe you are actually, actually accurate, and now that I've reread the policy. But I don't think he's been inaccurate either. So I will, I think there was some discussion before about perhaps we all need a little refresher in open meeting law, and at some point, that might be a good idea, too. But I can certainly appreciate, um, the difficulty with which we've come to the decision to not take a vote, and I accept it very much.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, so we'll move on to the superintendent evaluation tool. In May, we made, uh, we had a long discussion about the tool that we used last year not being okay, the tool that I brought forward as a modification not being okay. And we decided we would have an ad hoc committee to address this. And I did talk about with the officers, uh, the structure of this committee, and, um, I, I also talked with, uh, Member Denis about chairing this committee. And I think what my officers don't know is that after we decided the committee makeup would be, um, Member Denis as the chair, Vice Chair Martini as a member, and, uh, Member Wall as a member, I could not, in my heart or my whole body, ask Member Wall to do one more thing, uh, for the school committee. And so I've actually decided that I will have it be me that will serve on that committee with, uh, Vice Chair Martini and, and Member Denis as the chair. And in your packet, you have an updated subcommittee spreadsheet, um, for, that reflects all of this. In addition to, I do want to mention that, uh, Vice Chair Martini has done some wheeling and dealing in this and said, "I'll serve if someone else does the wellness committee." And so I agreed to do the wellness committee as well. Um, and all of that is reflected in the subcommittee, uh, updated list that you have in your packets. And I would like to, uh, I do think we usually vote on the subcommittee assignments as a committee. Yeah, uh, Member Johnson Musad's voting, or, or nodding his head. Um, I'm looking at Secretary Exstrom, and she's not, I don't think you even know I'm talking, so, um, but could I have a motion to, this is actually listed, um, under the chair's report, but seeing as it's related directly to this item, uh, could I get a motion to accept, uh, the updated subcommittee assignment list as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion of that? So we'll move right to a vote. Any abstentions? Any no votes? Okay, that passes unanimously. We do need to talk about a charge, um, for the superintendent evaluation tool ad hoc committee.
Hold on.
Yeah?
I want to be clear, I, because you've made this, uh, you've been confused about this previously. What you presented to us last time is still going to be used this time? The reason that it was going to come back to us is because it was all cattywampus and all the paperwork that was being sent to us.
What, what we talked about at May's meeting is that we would have an ad hoc committee that would put the tool together.
For next year, not for this year.
For FY '25?
Yes.
For FY '25?
Yes.
Okay. And you're saying I'm confused about that, and you're right?
Yes.
I was, okay. So the one for FY '24, for, for the current, I'm sorry, the one that we're going to use this year, um, is the one that the ad hoc committee has not seen yet because you took what I put together and you fixed it.
Yes.
That's what you're saying. And the ad hoc committee can still look at that, um, and, and fix it further if they need to.
Yes.
And then, related to the charge of the ad hoc committee, um, I have a suggestion, and obviously, we do not have to do it exactly this way. But I would ask someone to move that superintendent evaluation forum ad hoc committee, subcommittee, be charged with revising the evaluation tool used by the full school committee in a format agreeable to both the superintendent and the committee for a written evaluation of superintendent progress towards goals in FY '24, in 2024. Sorry. Sorry. I'm conf, I'm, it, it's late. So I can read that again. I would ask that someone move the, the superintendent evaluation forum ad hoc subcommittee be charged with revising the evaluation tool used by the full school committee in a format agreeable to both the superintendent and the committee for a written evaluation of superintendent progress towards goals in 2024. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
And, okay. And discussion of that? Member Denis, please.
Um, I just want to say that I have five rubrics of superintendent evaluation, um, one of which is our old one that we don't like. So I have four new ones and our old one. And I have included them in the drive, but I have not wiped them clean.
So with all due respect, can you discuss this first with your subcommittee and then bring it back to us in July?
Oh, okay.
Or August?
Okay, well, I had a question about that because in your motion, you said, I'm getting to that. In the motion, you said revise the instrument that we use, but I'm bringing new instruments. So is that included in your?
That's fine.
Okay, I'm just checking your language.
That's fine. I appreciate that. That's totally fine. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, so we will move to a vote. Are there any abstentions? Any no votes? And that passes unanimously. Okay. And we've done the tree donation, and I can't see. Okay, so for the next one, we have, I would like to do a consent item on the two Greenfield High School trips that are within the packet and on your agenda. I would ask for a motion to accept as a consent item and as presented, both Greenfield High School trips, one to Paris, one to the Mediterranean coast, both occurring in April of 2024.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And any discussion of this? How lucky they all are, right? Well, you can chaperone. Yep. Stranger things have happened than that, Mayor. Okay, so we'll move to a vote. Any abstentions? Any no votes? And that also passes unanimously. So we've got, okay, requests for new agenda items. Let's please just be brief, considering the hour, and we do still have an executive session. Any requests for new agenda items? Member Johnson Musad.
I'd like to repeat my request for the school committee evaluation to be on the next agenda.
That will absolutely be on the July, the self-evaluation you're talking about, right?
Yes.
Yep, that is planned for July. It just was too much for June. And any other requests? Member Denis.
I'd just like to see if we could get an update on the calendar.
I don't have an update.
Okay.
I would, I would ask if, if Member Exstrom has anything she would like to say.
Yeah, I have an update. It's very loosely formed. I've got, because, uh, so I've got, um, in it currently, the MASCE, um, pending calendar events, and I, we just received something today about November conference, as well as the monthly meetings here in the budget subcommittee. That's what's on there right now, and I'll, I wanted to put a little bit more into it before I invited everyone to it to view it. But it, but it does exist.
We could potentially have that on the July.
Sure.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay. Without, uh, if there's no, um, it, it, I have lost all words. If no one disagrees, we would consider the presentation of the strategic plan to be the report from the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for tonight. Is there anyone who would have an issue with that? Wonderful. Okay. I will be brief on my report. We already had the subcommittee assignment piece. And then, um, this second piece, the move to hybrid meetings, is not anything we would vote on tonight. It is something, it's basically an informational item that we need to move to a hybrid format. We actually, it, it, I have been, uh, discussing this with the superintendent for some time and the officers for some time. And today, literally, we got our first request from the public to move to a hybrid format. So it is now time for us to do that. Ironically, on the night we couldn't get anything to work is the night we would introduce this, but we would actually, um, discuss and vote in the, at the July meeting on this item. And is there any discussion at this time? Okay. So, subcommittee reports, I'm just going to go in order, budget.
Our discussion here was a, was a larger, robust discussion of the budget subcommittee meeting, so we're all good.
Okay. And what about policy?
Very briefly, um, we will be getting back on our, um, first Thursday, 11:00 AM meetings. I apologize to the public for the daytime meeting. It's the only time that we could find the, um, all the members could meet. And just to say that there's a lot of moving pieces that Christine and I are talking about because there's things with, with our, in, with our computer that needs to be looked at, our computer policies, there's things where MASC is simultaneously revising some policies. But our plan is to try to really get, um, our policies review completed because once it is, then MASC can host it and we can have it online and searchable. But just so folks are aware, that may mean that we will be coming back to you to review things that we may approve in the next few months. We might come back to you in six months and say, "We've got an up, another update for you." But, um, lots of moving pieces, but the main goal is to try to get that policy com, policies up on that searchable website.
Thank you. And what about redistricting?
The superintendent sent out a survey, uh, this week to all of the teachers with the options of one, which was the grade banding of K one, K one, two, three, and four, five. And then the other option was to be, which is redraw the lines for the schools and move the fifth grade back into the elementary schools. So we're trying to get teacher input, and then we will have a subcommittee meeting and bring it to the full school committee.
Thank you for that. Gentle question. Could we have a update in your parent update, your weekly update, that lists those and explains them for folks?
Yes.
Those two options?
Yes.
Awesome. But, yeah, just something, so people who aren't here or who were listening and didn't get it.
I, yes, and I will remind people that the summary of options is always on the front page of the website. That document remains. But yes, I had included a reminder last week, I think, that the re-envisioning of our school facilities had not been forgotten. It was still in, in process, but, um, yes, I will do an update.
Thank you. And, uh, the collaborative has an update, and there is a document, right, in the, in our packets for the collaborative. Go ahead, Member Denis.
I know it's very hard to read. It's very tiny. So it is in the Google Drive in a folder called "The Collaborative." And this is just pure data. It's just, just for fun. They recently started collecting, um, data about the districts in Frank... They recently started collecting data about the districts in Franklin County and how they utilize the collaborative services. So you can go and look at this sheet and find out how we use our, our collaborative services. Where are we not using it? Should we use more? Should we use less? How do we compare to other districts? It's purely just a data table, and they're starting to collect these things and disseminate them to board members. So I thought I would pass it along, so you can see where we are in the larger picture.
Any questions or discussion for Member Denis on that? Thank you for bringing it forward.
You're welcome.
Can I share that?
Please.
I spoke with the executive director, Todd Gazda, who shared that we are one of the most active districts in using their resources.
Next to Frontier, we're like a top user.
And most of the services that we don't use are paid services, so we are using a lot, so it was nice to see on the spreadsheet.
Thank you, thank you both. And we have also, Member Denis, an item on legislative advocacy resolution that is also in our packets, looks like this.
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Okay, hold on, I'm so sorry, it's so late, and I don't have all of the screens open, that I had open, and I'm very sorry, it's going to take me just a second. I gave the motion to Susan Barber. The motion just said that I move that the Greenfield School Committee accept the resolution for S335 as presented. Would you like me to read the resolution?
It's short enough, I think it makes sense for you to read it, please.
It's very, it's very, very short. "S335. Whereas we believe special education is a public service and should be funded appropriately through circuit breaker, we resolve to support changing the special education reimbursement from 75% to 90%."
Any discussion on this? Oh, we need, I'm sorry, we...
Second.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Martini made the second. Any discussion on this? Yes, please.
Now, I don't have any problem supporting this resolution, but I think that there, and this is part of a larger picture, I'm, I'm so thankful for all the people who want us to advocate from the state for more funding to come to the schools. However, what I know is that everything that we advocate to the state for, everyone in the state has to agree that that's something that they want, or a majority of people. A, a much easier, and it has to go through bills and all of those things, I understand the process. A, what I think really needs to happen is Greenfield needs to have a more robust economy so that it can stand on its own, and we don't have to rely on the state. There is a finite amount of money that's available. And if Greenfield as a city would become more business-friendly, meaning attract more businesses and do what they can to get them to come into town, and get behind expanding businesses, we would go much further and would see a return on all of that hard work that I know everyone is doing.
I'm going to, I'm going to cut you, it's kind of off on a tangent. Let's talk about this, this.
Okay.
You don't...
I, I don't think it's a tangent. I think that we keep doing all these things, and it's a resolution, and that's great. However, if we really want to get more funding, there is a, a more stable way and a better plan to make that happen, and it would be helpful for the entire city, not just the schools.
Okay. Thank you. Member Denis.
I don't disagree with Member Exstrom at all. My hope with this was just to begin to get a foothold into completing our policy BJ, which is our legislative policy, and my hope is that, of course, we're, we're at the deadline, like there's, June 30th is the deadline for this, so there's no way to bring forward all the resolutions and do the whole thing. But I wanted to start the process, because the legislative session is two years, so when this comes up again, I would, I plan to bring forward a motion to create a resolution subcommittee, so that we could maybe plan to do all of the things that we think are appropriate for our district and our community, to make one document, and then to send it into the resolution committee at MASK, which is what they do, and then they will send it on. And I had a long talk with the MASK vice president, and he said not to be too fussy about language. He said just pull it together, get an idea of what you all want to do, and make sure you send it to us by the deadline. So this is more like a long-term plan of making this policy happen. So this was just the beginning of a toehold to even make a folder of what, how we want to write resolutions, and what it should even look like, and what it should even be. So in the folder that I created that says "Resolutions" in the drive, there is an example of the resolution committee document that MASK created for 2022, so you can see how that looks when it's all, comes together as a subcommittee. So this was just an attempt to do something I think is really important, and, you know, pass or fail, this is like a start on doing some real advocacy work at the state level, and I agree with you. But I'm going to try to do things instead of not doing anything.
Any further discussion? Vice Chair Martini.
I wanted to ask the superintendent to very quickly, in a very small nutshell, explain for people who don't understand what the circuit breaker is, what it is, and the potential impact this might have on the school district.
It's a reimbursement structure for high-cost special education services. We get reimbursed a percentage over a certain amount, which I won't get into. We get reimbursed a percentage. Right now, it is 75% of the cost over that threshold. This bill proposes to raise it to 90. So we could get reimbursed additional of the costs over the threshold that is currently set.
Thank you, and I would also note that there is a separate bill to lower that threshold as well.
Thank you both. Any further discussion on this? So we'll move to a vote. Are there any abstentions? I will abstain. Any other abstentions? Okay, any no votes? Okay, so the rest is six yes votes, thank you. And we need a motion for executive session. We will return to open session. The motion for executive session includes exemption reason number three, which is...
I'm sorry, are we not doing correspondence?
That is, those are just noted items.
Okay, okay, sorry, just checking, just checking.
Motion to enter executive session for exemption reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I do declare, and like I said, we will return to open session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And we do have to do a roll call vote for this. Secretary Exstrom, you ready?
Yeah, Member Denis?
Yes.
Secretary Exstrom, yes. Member Johnson Musad?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martini?
Yes.
Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidner?
Yes.
You're unanimous, we're in executive session.